I'd like to call the October Planning Commission First School and Township Meeting to order, like to have the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight's meeting is being livestreamed and videotaped, so I want to make everybody aware of that. If we could silence cell phones, so we don't have cell phones ringing and so on throughout the meeting, that would be great. And I think we're going to set a hard stop at 10:30, if everybody agrees to that, so we're not here all night.
We worked out well before.
What?
We worked out well before.
Okay.
I was down in Fort Benning.
Okay. So, the next thing I would like to do is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 21st.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
A second?
Second. Any comments from the Planning Commission members?
They were well detailed.
Yes.
John Kim?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, Sedgley Farms, Reeves Tract, and Select Sites, East Phillips Drive are on the agenda tonight. This is an older project that's coming back around, so I think we'll ask the applicant to do their presentation. I think we'll start off with the Select Sites one, and then the township engineer will go through the ladder, hitting the highlights, the high points that, you know, might be a sticking point. We don't need to go through, like, every comment that's going to be a will comply, or, you know, if there's a discussion point, we can discuss that. And the Planning Commission will entertain questions from the Planning Commission, and then we'll let the public speak on that one, and then we'll tackle the bigger one second. Step up to the microphone and introduce yourself and...
Thank you. You on here?
Is he on?
Okay, thanks. Good evening, I'm Todd Pollak, President of Pollak Builders. Equitable owner under agreement is sad with respect to the 65-acre Reeves property, which is highlighted in the yellowish on the screen here. I'm also representing Select Sites, owner of the one-acre property, less than one-acre property, at 876 East Phillips Drive, and that's just to the left of... This is 876 East Phillips Drive, so the project...
Why don't you take the mic?
It's oral.
Oral?
Yeah, you can take it right up there.
It's a good thing I'm not chewing gum at the same time here. I'll try to stay to the side here, so it's okay on TV. Also, from our development team here, we have John Snyder, our Land Use Attorney, and also Jeremy Mazur from Chester Valley Engineers, who's our project, civil engineer for the project. The project is a 51-lot, single-family development encompassing a little over 66 acres. As I mentioned, it's the Reeves property, which is in yellow, and the 876 East Phillips Drive. There are four existing residents on the property, one on East Phillips, and there are three on the Reeves property, which are William Reeves' home, which is eligible for, to be on the historic register. There's a carriage home on the property, and a tenant house at the back end of Lot 19. It's located adjacent to Pickery Reservoir. Just a note, north is oriented to the right. Generally, plans are north-up on this, because of the shape of the property, north is to your right. The property's accessed from Valley Forge Road to the north and East Phillips Drive to the west. It's located in the R1 zoning district, but it's R2 zoning on the northwest. Both this East Phillips area and Wells Road are R2 zoning, and on the northeast, Dorchester is R1 zoning. As kind of brief background, as was mentioned earlier, we last left off on this project about 13 years ago, a little over 13 years. On January 29, 2009, we received Planning Commission recommendation for approval for this plan utilizing the alternate layout, which is Sheet Number 43 of 48 of the plan set. The Planning Commission recommended waivers for a T versus a Y intersection at the intersection of Sedgley and Eagle Farm, or Eagle Road, and they also recommended narrower whis for the cartways, 28-foot and 24-foot. The Planning Commission also recommended a private connection to East Phillips Drive with a posted private entrance off of East Phillips, and resort-style entry features to distinguish it from a public road. The township engineer at the time, Gilmore and Associates, also recommended preliminary approval with granting the requested waivers for the alternate plan. The supervisors were due to make a decision a month later at their February 4, 2009 meeting. However, before that meeting, I received a call from Supervisor Jim Morrison on behalf of the supervisors, asking if I would hold off on the plan's approval and consider working with the township on a cluster plan. That was going to be along the lines of a previous sketch that we presented to the township in September of 2005. So, in September of 2005, we went over a couple ideas for cluster development of this with open space, and that didn't get anywhere, so we went ahead and filed for our 50, at the time, it was a 56-lot plan. So, we worked with a team at the township that included the township manager, the township engineer, a member of the supervisors, and a member of the Planning Commission. And we took several plan concepts to the Planning Commission, Historical Commission, the EAC, and the Open Space Committee, a number of different plans that we came up with, we were working on the property. The township also considered input from their consultants. For instance, Tom Comida introduced some small village lots as we were taking a look at those cluster concepts. The result was, after several iterations, a consensus on what we call Plan J. It was a 94-lot PRD plan with three housing types, about 35 percent open space on the property. The team overwhelmingly considered that was the best concept for development of the property, considering the traffic impact, school impacts, environmental impacts, historical impact, and the direct neighborhood impact. And it added a new empty nester housing alternative for the community. In order to move that forward, the township created a planned residential development PRD zoning ordinance and a district that specifically accommodated Plan J, and that was approved in November of 2013. That was about five years after we were asked to put the byright plan on hold. So, it took us about five years to get ahead with that concept. Sorry to interrupt. So, at this point, two PRD plans had been initiated. The first was Sedgley Farm, and that was identical in almost every respect to Plan J, had 94 lots with minimal development on the north side of the property in deference to the adjacent neighbors. This, the property, we call the north side of the property, there's a figure of the reservoir that sort of bisects the property, so this is considered the north side and considered that the south side. A second plan, Eagles Point, was another PRD plan under the ordinance, and that was again 94 lots, but that had limited development on the south side, somewhat equal to the byright plan that we're looking at right now. Both those plans have been turned down by the township. So, tonight, we are re-engaging the byright 51-lot plan that we were asked to put on hold back in 2009. The plan is subject to the 2006 zoning and subdivision ordinances, as the application for this was made in May 22, 2006.
Wow.
A minor plan adjustment was made to the plan dated 10/12/08 to allow for an increased setback from the reservoir. We had an agreement with Aqua for a 75-foot setback from the reservoir, but the state has now, I guess we're 150-foot now, it's a new state requirement. That did not affect the layout at all, just some minor adjustments of the stormwater management and house locations. Other than the previously obtained special exceptions and waiver associated with a stream crossing, no other waivers are required for this plan. Should the township be interested in the alternate layout, which was Sheet 43, additional wave, design waivers will be required. Again, that was cartway whis, stormwater management, ordinance curves, setbacks, easements, cul-de-sac length, and street tree locations, not the number of trees, but the locations. We are currently updating our traffic study with new camps, our wetland study, and new PND clearance letters, and we'll be re-engaging planning modules as well, because it's been a while since we did that. At the end of last Friday, we received a review letter from your township engineer, Paul, Team M Associates, and I guess that's maybe where we'll go ahead and start. Answer any questions?
Okay.
Answer any questions?
Certainly.
Start with the Select Sites and, you know, try to set the...
So, yes, so starting with the Select Sites, which is the subdivision application for the lot on East Phillips Drive. We did complete a review letter as referenced by the applicant, and there are multiple comments in this letter, they are enumerated, and one particular note that I would like to bring up is comment number, I'm sorry, comment number D9, which is located on page number four. And just to read that for anyone that's here, in accordance with SADO Section 502.C.1(c)(1), the secondary feeder street shall be those which are used as connecting and through streets to residential areas and to connect residential streets to collector roads and a community facilities with low volumes. They shall have a minimum right-of-way of 60 feet, and I didn't finish the full comment or the, excuse me, the full verbiage from the ordinance. But what, the reason I'm bringing this up to the Planning Commission's attention is that East Phillips Drive is presently a cul-de-sac. It's access off of Southway Horse Road. The application for a connection in from the Reeves Tract, which is the second discussion point today, will bring through traffic as well as the residential traffic from the community up East Phillips Drive. East Phillips Drive, like I said, is a cul-de-sac. It's going to be upgraded from a cul-de-sac street classification to a secondary feeder classification for the township. East Phillips Drive, as it presently exists, has a 27-foot wide cartway, so there's 27 feet of pavement, and a 50-foot right-of-way. A secondary feeder, which is what this, which is what would be required, would need a 38-foot cartway, 38 feet of pavement, and a 60-foot right-of-way for East Phillips Drive. So, we are taking an existing cul-de-sac, and we're creating trips going through it, obviously, from the Reeves Tract, in addition to the through traffic that will be turning from Valley Forge Road Route 23, go through Sedgley Lane, Eagles Point, East Phillips Drive, and then they will be able to bypass a problematic intersection in the township, which is the intersection of 23 and White Horse Pike. So, that was, although there are other comments listed in this particular letter, that is the one that I thought of the most concern that I thought the Planning Commission would like to hear about.
So, there is currently space to create a right-of-way as opposed to a cul-de-sac?
I don't know if I fully understand the question. The current right-of-way is 50 feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
It will need to become 60 feet wide, so it'll be, it'll need to be increased onto all the properties, as well as the cartway is existing at 27 feet wide, that would need to be increased to 38 feet wide to allow for the additional traffic, based off of the classification of this.
So, this, but this would not impede on private homes?
It does. Yes, it would, because the right-of-way is presently 50 feet.
Their front yard.
So, their front yards, there would be 50 feet on both sides.
I see.
So, in theory, they're losing five feet on each side. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to address that, because that issue was specifically raised with respect to the PRDs and was decided by the Court of Common Pleas in Chester County. These are residential streets, not residential connector streets, so that issue was shot down by the court.
Okay, thank you.
So, these can remain as 50-foot-wide right-of-ways and not residential connector streets.
Well, the definition of a secondary feeder street are those which are used as connecting and through streets to serve residential areas and to connect residential streets and collector roads.
I understand, that hasn't changed, and that was the same definition as considered by the court. And the court found that these were residential streets, not residential connector streets. So, that issue's been decided. We believe that we have a right to remain as 50-foot-wide right-of-ways under that court decision.
But the road still needs to be widened?
No.
Stay at 27 feet?
Well, but that's an off-site improvement, so that's not an obligation of the applicant. If the township wants to widen it, they can widen it.
I think Bill would like to...
It doesn't make sense to me.
The MPC doesn't permit a township to require off-site improvements. The widening of East Phillips would be an off-site improvement. If you wanted to require off-site improvements, you would have to have an Article 5A plan for...
Can you speak that more in English than legal use? I don't understand what you mean by all that. Honestly, don't know the code by numbers to respond to it.
What the MPC says is that you can require frontage improvements for a property that's being subdivided. You cannot require improvements to be made away from the frontage of that property.
But the stub of East Phillips Drive will have to be made a secondary feeder, so you would be doing...
No, not a secondary feeder. No, it's not. That's what the court said. These roads are all residential streets. There are no secondary feeders with respect to this property, the East Phillips property, they're residential streets. They serve residences.
This is a through road. It's literally in the definition, this is going to be a through road.
You've lost that case, so it doesn't make any sense to argue it with me. It was decided by the judge.
You should have.
Yeah. Bill, can you get the microphone?
Which PRD case are you referring to, which decision?
It's the Sedgley Farm 1, and there's an unappealed issue in the Sedgley Farm.
Is the microphone on?
It's feasible to...
I don't know, we haven't done anything to it.
In remap, the case isn't very high.
Can I follow up? Sure. Are you saying that the, whatever happened in the PRD cases, which involved the different ordinance and different layouts, is binding upon this applicant?
I'm saying that the court's interpretation of the definition of secondary feeder street applies with respect to the streets on this tract and serving this tract. That's what they were related to, and the arguments were specifically made to that judge by the intervenor in the Sedgley Farm case, and the judge specifically ruled on it.
Did that go to the Commonwealth Court, or was that...
That went to the Commonwealth Court, but not that issue. That issue wasn't decided or handled by the Commonwealth Court, wasn't argued by the Commonwealth Court.
A little bit, but I...
Okay.
So, it's an action, we have to need to get that verified, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll have to, we'll go through the court case that Mr. Snyder has told us to take a look at.
Pretty important piece of this.
Mr. Pollak, and is there any other comments in the review letter that you'd like to talk about?
You're talking about the Select Sites one?
Yes.
Yeah. The only one I'd mention is the indication that, for some reason, the county has a different size on this piece of property. Do you have the survey, you have, we have the DB comp, why the county would have a different number? I have no idea, but we don't care what number they have, it is what it is.
Okay.
Has the, so there's an existing residence there, right? And so, this will be next to their residence?
This will be in front of their residence and to the extension to the side. It's a lot, why don't you show, is there a plan you can put up?
The current lot line for this is this angled piece that's coming from the cul-de-sac to the Reeves property, and what we're doing is providing a right-of-way approximately 50-foot wide. The house will still have frontage on the cul-de-sac, driveway is on the other side, and backyard, none of that'll change. It's just a connector right-of-way is what Select Site subdivision is doing, providing a right-of-way to the Reeves property.
Okay.
And it's probably good for you to have some background on this. East Phillips Drive was designed and created to provide access to the Reeves property. The right-of-way, as shown on the original subdivision plan, extended all the way to the Reeves property. The township had the ability for the first 21 years after that plan was created and approved to accept dedication of that right-of-way and extend the road to the Reeves property. It didn't do that, so that the right of the township to extend it expired after 21 years. However, each owner of a lot within that subdivision retained its right to use that right-of-way. Now, in an effort to avoid unnecessary litigation over that, that right-of-way extends 25 feet onto the Select Sites property and 25 feet onto the property to its north. Instead of arguing with that neighbor that we have the right to build that road through that right-of-way as an owner of a lot within that subdivision, we elected to file this plan moving that right-of-way so that all 50 feet of it come from the Select Sites property. That doesn't give up our right to the other 25 feet, but we elected not to get into that battle unnecessarily, since we had more than enough property to be able to add that 25 feet of right-of-way on our side of that original right-of-way for East Phillips Drive.
So, that won't be owned by the developer? It'll just be a right-of-way on the existing piece of property?
The plan provides that it's two things. It's a right-of-way, which will be offered for dedication to the township, understanding that there's no requirement that a township accept dedication of something offered to it. So, in addition to creating it as a right-of-way, which is required, does require subdivision approval, there is no requirement to create, of a plan or approval by the municipality to create an easement, but we have indicated by a note on the plan that Select Sites is also granting a 50-foot-wide easement to the Reeves property, so that if the township doesn't accept it as a, as a public road, the Reeves property can create it as a private road access to their property. So, either way, we're providing the necessary ability to extend that road.
So, the bottom line is that what you've taken the time and effort and all the hurdles you've been through to present to us all, is that what you have shared with us is feasible to do?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Why was that originally built as a cul-de-sac if it was envisioned that there would be a road there all along?
I think you're probably going to have to ask somebody that did it 30 years ago as to why they didn't extend it all the way through. My guess is that they extended it as far as was necessary to serve their lots, but provided the right-of-way to serve the, and extend into the next property, which is generally good planning. And so, from that standpoint...
As people bought properties and built houses there, was it very clear to them that there was a right-of-way there?
The plan, the plan under which they bought showed it. I don't know what, we weren't involved in any sale of that, or what people were told or not told, but if you looked on the subdivision plan, it clearly went all the way to the Reeves property.
Right. Thirty years ago, there may have been a descendant of the Reeves family still living there on the property, and I'm not sure of the specifics, but it was Reeves' private country estate, essentially.
Yeah, and that would not have been unusual planning back then to create how future development would happen in the township. That was considered good planning.
And who established that right-of-way? Would the Reeves have been involved in that?
The Reeves were not involved in that.
Okay.
They were a beneficiary of it.
Who would have been involved in that? The township, or, I mean, who benefited from that?
Well, normally, what would happen is a developer would come in with a plan, and the township, the township planning commission, the county planning commission would indicate that good planning means that you should provide for extension of streets to properties that could be served by it. So, that would not have been in any way an unusual feature of a subdivision plan. So that would not have been in any way an unusual, uh, feature of a subdivision plan.
Any other Planning Commission members have any questions?
Just, you know, Paul, have you, have you looked back at those, you know, 30 years ago? I'm sure you, you probably haven't had the time or the effort to do that, but I mean, you, you, do you agree that all that was in place then?
There, there, the plan that was last revised in 1962 shows East Philip Drive going through and then, and there's a cul-de-sac. There is a, an extension going towards the Reeves tract that says, uh, a future right-of-way or something to that extent. Nothing had been acted upon, and like, uh, Mr. Snyder had said, it was shared upon two lots. And, uh, East Philip Drive, as it goes down, is a straight shot, and, and the bulb goes off to the side. And the, uh, the, the way the right-of-way was laid out, the easement originally would have gone as if East Philip Drive wasn't a cul-de-sac, it would be a straight line. Uh, the, the applicant, uh, for Select Sites is, uh, because they bought one of the two properties, they're taking that right-of-way and it's curving into the cul-de-sac and then going through. Uh, so that's really the history of that. Uh, obviously, I wasn't born when the plans were, uh, were approved and signed by the township, but, uh, that, that is what the plan showed at the time.
Thank you.
I got some questions.
Go ahead.
And these aren't necessarily directed at any individual, I just checking for understanding, and maybe it'll help the Planning Commission. So the Select Sites development, that, did that ever get recommended for approval by the Planning Commission to the board supervisors?
Yes, it did. Same night.
It did.
Same night. Both plans were on the agenda.
So neither one of them got approved by the board supervisors?
Neither was approved, correct. By the supervisor.
And so, and then you flipped over to the PRD, went through that, and that never got approved?
Correct.
So Select Sites, so the PRD and the Buy Right Plan were both recommended by the Planning Commission for approval by the, I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
Yes. So the, uh, um, the Buy Right Plan, uh, Select Sites and the Reeves property were both recommended for approval in that December 2008.
No.
2009.
2008.
It's into that, we got 2008.
Okay. All right, so.
And, and basically we agreed to put that on the shelf while we tried those other PRD plans.
What I'm trying to remember, Mr. Pollak, is did the Planning Commission ever recommend approval of the PRD plan to Planning Commission? There was two of them. Do you remember, Phil?
Well, I've been looking at the notes from that night, and it's a little confusing, but the motion was the recommendation of the Reeves plan, and the law would says both plans, but the Reeves plan submitted, uh, two plans at that time, the original and the alternate, and.
But I think the original wasn't a part of that conversation.
I thought certain that the, uh, the, uh, Select Sites plan was approved, and well, the, the, the licensure is ambiguous. It doesn't go in any detail that we're talking about, uh, in terms of the, uh, the, the single lot. I don't think it's mentioned.
I don't even think the Select Sites property is mentioned. The title of the discussion is the Reeves property, um, and it's unclear. It's, it was my impression that the, uh, single lot was never up for review. Uh, I could be wrong, but we're talking about something that happened in 2009, and the record, uh, appears to be a little ambiguous.
We can dig back into that, but the, uh, the Select Sites plan came out of a recommendation earlier in the process by the Planning Commission that a second access to East Philip be provided. So, uh, the, the review by the Planning Commission clearly was with the access to East Philip.
Right. I remember that.
As a matter of fact, I do recall on that, uh, recommend, recommendation, it was also to make the connection a private connection. So that was part, so that was part of, uh, that discussion.
It was a limited access.
Right.
One way.
Yeah, I have another question.
It, it wasn't one way, it was to, uh, make it.
Intent was to make sure it wasn't a throughway.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Pollak, at the end of your introduction, you, you ran through something about, you, you talked about various options, I believe. Maybe that wasn't the right word.
A couple of different plans. We had two PRD, there have been two PRD plans.
It was, it's a very, yeah, it's a very under, I think it was with reference to what's going on up here.
The, the alternate.
The alternate.
Oh, the alternate plan, yes. Uh, the, uh, plans that are submitted to township also has an alternate plan.
Okay.
That plan, that alternate plan was, had recommend, the Planning Commission back, uh, before we shelved it, recommended that we go to a T intersection instead of a Y intersection, and also recommended narrower, um, roadway width than, uh, for the, than the code, and especially the road coming in from, uh, from, um, Valley Forge Road into the property. There's no houses taking access, there's no reason to have a 32-foot cartway there. Um, and, uh, to, to, to reduce the, uh, amount of impervious coverage and, and water runoff, they, they suggested a narrow cartway as well.
Does this plan in front of us tonight reflect those recommendations?
They are, but they're, uh, uh, the engineer Paul, uh, has not reviewed that alternate sheet, as I understand, as I looked at this, but that sheet is included in the plan set that you have.
Right.
For this.
Okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the plan set in general without that, the alternate sheet is designed to provide, uh, that there be no variances and no waivers, so that it was designed to be totally compliant. Uh, the recommendation of the Planning Commission with respect to width of roadway, with respect to, uh, length of cul-de-sac as a result of putting in a T intersection, uh, those would require waivers. Uh, so from our standpoint, uh, we obviously don't want, uh, a plan that simply requests waivers that means that you could turn us down for, by denying the waivers. So we have a plan that is compliant and an alternate plan that if you want to, uh, provide the waivers for, uh, those items that I just mentioned, uh, there's a sheet in there that you can recommend approval with those waivers. There were more waivers back in 2008, uh, with respect to that alternate plan, but a number of those issues were involved in the litigation, uh, with the township over the, over this plan that occurred in 2009, 2010, um, and then resulted in a decision by Judge Nagel on some of those items that would have required waivers if you followed the township's interpretation of their ordinance. Those were, uh, disallowed by the court. Uh, the Commonwealth Court affirmed Judge Nagel's decision. Uh, so, uh, there will be places in the review of this plan where we have comments from T and M that we will respond by saying, that issue no longer exists, it was decided in 2010 by Judge Nagel. For example, uh, the issue of grading within five feet of the property, uh, and that type of thing. Those were all involved in the case. Uh, it's our intent to put that case on the final plan so that there's no issue as to what the law is with respect to that, as well as the decision of the zoning hearing.
Can I tell anything else?
Sure.
No question really about what Judge Nagel did in this case. Uh, what I'm struggling with is how the, uh, the PRD case conclusions and decisions such as they are, that deal with a, uh, a separate ordinance, separate designs, could possibly be binding on this application.
Simply because they relate to the same ordinance section you're trying to enforce here, and interpreted that ordinance section as to, uh, what it means and what it doesn't mean.
The, um, so the Planning Commission tonight is being, are we being asked to make a recommendation to the board tonight with regard to what's in front of us?
No.
This is just a discussion tonight?
This is to help bring you up to date as to what's involved and to respond in part to some of those questions in the, in the letter, uh, which should have discussion. Actually, most of what's in that letter, we think should be in a discussion meeting with Todd, our engineer, and your engineer to go through his letter, so that we're not taking a twenty-some page letter and trying to go through all of those things in front of the Planning Commission.
Been through enough.
So after that, after you guys get together, you guys come to agreement on some things, then you'll be back in front of Planning Commission again?
And there'll probably be some, some items that as a result, comments from Paul will, will create some revisions. So my guess is there'll be one more set of review after we respond to this set of reviews. So whether that's a November meeting of yours, whether that's a December meeting of yours, as we've explained to, uh, Mr. Brennan, uh, we're here to try and get this done. We're not here to try and force time periods or anything like that. We wanna, we wanna be reasonable and make sure that the, the appropriate time is spent.
You want to get approval of the plan as it is? There's the township or the Planning Commission asked for the alternates. Are you gonna remain open to implementing those alternates on a case-by-case basis, or how are you going to take that forward?
Very simply, the alternate, uh, there are specific items on, of alternate. They're designed on the sheets that, uh, are the alternate sheets to this plan. If you recommend that they, those waivers be granted, they would be granted to design in accordance with those sheets. So it would be, it's already there. If the board supervisors then agrees to grant those waivers, the final plan will reflect those sheets. If the board doesn't grant those waivers, then we still have the sheets that are compliance sheets.
Will you do it on a case-by-case basis? Let's say we recommend five alternates, the board approves four of them.
They're really only one or two.
Okay.
Uh, they're not, they're not a lot. It's length of cul-de-sac, it's width of road, it's, uh, the T intersection is a, is a function of those things.
Okay.
So, so basically, the plan we're looking at is the plan you're presenting, and if you, if we agree to this plan, then, then you may ask us to look at the alter, alternates, but.
We're asking him to look at the alternates.
Yeah, yeah. We did that because they were things requested by the Planning Commission back in 2008 that we said, if we get the waivers, we can do them.
Yeah.
But we need waivers from the township to do them, so they can only be an alternate plan, 'cause we can't give you a plan that is centered on waivers.
To keep our life simple, we should really focus on this plan and not the alternates, yeah, but, uh.
Yeah, the, yes, and the, the, the changes for the alternates are minimal in design. They basically resolve around the intersection into the property where you come in, after you've come in from Route 23, and they relate to the width of road. Those are the major things that would be involved.
But, but at one time you were looking for, um, for condos in the property? You were looking at that, but that's not an alternate.
We were asked by the township to put this on, on hold and consider that. We, you know, that's, that's what happened for the last, the last 10 years or more.
Wow.
But that's kind of off the table now?
Well, those are in court, and obviously, we're going to build whatever we get approved first.
I don't understand that.
I don't understand.
Totally. What do you mean, that's in court?
We can have multiple plans that are, that are, uh, before municipal. We don't have to limit ourselves to one plan. We have the Sedgley Farms, uh, PRD plan that is, uh, on appeal to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. We have the Eagles Point PRD plan, which is on appeal to the Court of Common Pleas, and we have this plan, which is not on appeal to anything. So, uh, we're trying to get any of those three approved to build. This plant and this landowner started before 2006, and so, uh, we will take whatever we get first.
Mr. Pollak, you, go ahead, Barbara.
I would just wanted to ask, at one point, there was an amount of the, um, property that was to be reserved for open spaces. That's still part of it? And the other thing was, I was, I was going to consult with, uh, Penda's Project Path to get you a free bridge at one time. Is anything I, of that still feasible or doable?
So, uh, at this point, your first question was, uh.
Open space.
Anchorage for open space.
There is a very small requirement for open space under the R1 zoning, and we are providing that on, on the plan. The other PRD plans had like 30 and 40 percent open space. There, that was a different layout. That's what the PRD plans, that's not in front of you.
Okay.
With this plan. So, uh.
But there is some designation for open space?
Yeah, it's just a small section of open space.
Okay.
In this plan. And as far as the bridge is concerned, at this point, uh, there's not a trail on this. That bridge we were gonna utilize on a trail, and it's not part of this, it's part of the PRD events.
Right.
You said something about 56 versus 51?
Yes, original, uh, original, uh, plan was 56 lots. We went to the historic, we've been to the Historic Commission and the Planning Commission before. Uh, one of the things we were asked to do was to add some more area to the William Reeves house, and, uh, so we took the lot line that was adjacent and swung it around so it would have a better view of the reservoir, and we also eliminated a lot that was between this and the Carriage House. And previously, our stormwater management was back where this Carriage House is. They asked, uh, if we could leave the Carriage House, and so we have that by itself on a lot. So both the William Reeves house and the Carriage home, uh, will be sold as is on two different lots, and, um, so we, it's part of through the approval process, um, we went from 56 lots to 51.
Okay. So we kind of wandered over into the other portion of, of the review letter.
I'm just trying to get all the facts straight.
Yeah, well, we, we were looking at the, specifically the Select Sites one acre lot on East Phillips in, in the shorter review letter. So I'd like to, if there are any more questions on, on, on that application from the Planning Commission, we, we can look at that. Other than that, I would like to, um, have Paul, uh, go through and, and give his short.
I'm gonna jump in before you go.
Yeah, I'd like to also, I have another comment.
What I'd like to do is, just before we leave Select Sites, I just think it would help the Planning Commission if we summarize the discussion, and if anybody has a timeline with regard to, not, maybe it's not a timeline, but the sequence of events of how it started out, 'cause I remember, but I don't remember the details of, it was gonna be a private road, there was gonna be closed off.
It was a limited access.
The Plan, the Plan Commission asked for it. I think it started out as fire access, just what, how did that?
Now, the, the original plan that was filed was, in essence, this plan. It was, you know, the Select Sites property is not on here. Uh, it was a single access to Route 23. Uh, recommendations, uh, traffic-wise, uh, from a, from an access standpoint, recommendation for, because of the size of the property, was that we provide two means of access to this property. Uh, as a result, uh, we look first at the, uh, extension of the cul-de-sac without having to do anything more than, uh, use that easement, that, uh, that right-of-way that was there that comes to our property on the basis that we were a beneficiary of that, even though we weren't a, uh, a lot on that subdivision plan. Uh, we decided that that was litigation that wasn't necessary, uh, and the. Uh, we decided that that was litigation that wasn't necessary, uh, and the select sites property became available. Uh, so we acquired it and looked at the issue, as I said, of whether we provide a road within that right-of-way now that we were an owner under that subdivision plan, or whether we revise where that is so that we don't have to, uh, deal with the property owner to our door. It was to be a road. Uh, the issue of whether it was going to simply be a full-use road, uh, was an, an item of discussion in meetings. Uh, certainly, there were people that would like to see it restricted, would like to, uh, see if it could be private, would like to see if it, uh, could have, uh, high, uh, road calming features to it. All of those things were discussed. Uh, the recommendation of the planning commission was that it be, uh, private and restricted in some way so that it would not be used as a cut-through. Have to remember that we have no desire to see that road used as a cut-through either. It's coming through our development as well as through, through East Phillips. Uh, there were all sorts of discussions of what way you could do that, but the only thing that resulted out of being in front of the planning commission was the recommendation you see in that, uh, in those minutes, uh, that it, that it be private and restricted in some way. Uh, right now, the application as it stands doesn't provide for restriction. We're willing to talk about that, uh, but the, the issue of what it is, is right now, it's a, it's a public road as proposed.
What's Plan B?
What?
If you didn't come off of East Phillips, what's Plan B for a second means of entrance or regression?
East Phillips. There is no Plan B.
Right.
And where does Castleberry fit into that mix? Is that...
It's, it's not, it's not feasible. This is the feasibility, this is what we have a, have, uh, will have an easement to, for this property through the other entity that's part of our, uh, development.
We're trying to move forward in a practical, feasible way is my understanding of this. The only question I have is maybe to, um, Bill Brennan or the engineer. Um, back when I was supervisor, we were talking about a trail that would connect ultimately through the perimeter of the Reeves property, and I don't know whether any of that has moved forward.
So Barbara, that, that's the PRD plan, so that's not in front of us tonight. That's the plan that's caught up in court.
Thank you.
So it's the one that has the green space, the bridge, the trail. It's got all those options.
Got it, okay.
I think the trail was part of the PRD program.
Practical feasibility.
And not this one.
Okay.
Okay, I think Paul, if you could point out the highlights, the sticking points in the, uh, PR, the, in the fifty lot subdivision, fifty...
Did you want public comment on this letter first?
I think since they're, they're so linked together, if we can hold on to the public comment till after that, it, 'cause we'll, we'll be wandering into the PRD again.
I understood.
So, or not PRD, but into the, by right plan.
All right, so again, uh, the, the letter here, now we're talking about the Reeves tract, which is the larger subdivision as shown on the exhibit that the applicant has brought to the, uh, to the table here. Uh, my letter has, uh, a lot of comments, and I wanted to highlight a handful that I thought the planning commission would want to hear, uh, discussed. Uh, the first would be comment C2, which is found on pages three, number four. And, uh, I know the, the, a lot of these comments that I'm going to talk about are kind of like rollovers on top of each other, so, uh, this being the first comment. Um, so what we're, we're talking about here is, in particular, Sedgley Lane is being, uh, it's, it's, it's going in between Dorchester and an area called Belmont Terrace. The, the length of Sedgley Lane is, is running along, uh, a back of five properties on Dorchester Lane, all of which exist. And the comment that, uh, that I'm talking about right now, C2, is that the one property in the far corner, it actually has a tennis court in the, in the, in the back there, it's adjoining, we've got a square over here to you, thank you for the... That when you have the double frontage, 'cause that is presently a rear yard for that, but now it's going to become a double frontage, it doesn't meet the, the required length of a hundred and five feet. So it's going to, it's only a hundred and one feet, but it, it causes a problem. You know, it causes a waiver that will be required for the project. It's, it's impacting a neighboring property.
And let me, let me address that, 'cause that one's very easy to answer. That one was specifically answered in Judge Nagel's, uh, decision in 2010, and these are not double frontage lots, uh, as found by the court. Uh, so that comment is, has been decided already. The, neither the Belmont Terrace nor the Dorchester, uh, lots along, uh, any of the, it's called the Sedgley Drive coming in, uh, were determined by the, they were determined by the court to not be, uh, double frontage lots.
Can I use color to...
Yeah.
Judge Nagel's opinion speaks for itself, of course, but, um, he, his decision on the double frontage lots, uh, was specifically related to the fact that Belmont Terrace, uh, did not contain a roadway. And, uh, my reading of it was that, uh, his conclusion about, uh, there not being double fronted, frontage lots, we did not, uh, refer to Dorchester.
No, it, it did. Uh, and you can specifically look at it, and what it basically also said was that the area of ground that's between the right-of-way and those lots precluded those lots from being double frontage lots. And that, that's what's shown on this plan. And that's specifically, uh, on page twenty-one of Judge Nagel's opinion.
Did he say that it goes to be, uh, open space, it has about twelve or fifteen inches wide here was a factor?
Yes.
And the township doesn't accept that?
You mean, accept ownership of it?
Right.
Well, we have a homeowners association.
Now, the open space that you're referring to, it's required to be at least one quarter acre.
It's a reserve strip.
It's, it's labeled as open space. And, and it's, it's a quarter acre, and it's, and it's supposed to be seventy-five feet wide, neither of which is...
It's not intended as qualifying open space.
You can use it in the calculations for open space.
We'll look at that, but the judge was very clear, those lots are not reverse frontage lots. And therefore, that issue on this plan was decided.
But for that to be considered open space or not right-of-way butting those lots, you'll need a waiver, 'cause that, that reserve strip or an open space, it doesn't meet the criteria. It's not contiguous for a quarter acre and it's not seventy-five feet wide.
If it were to be qualifying open space. Now, I'll look at the fact as to whether it was used in the calculation of qualifying open space. I don't think it was, but the fact that it exists doesn't mean that it has to meet the requirements of qualifying open space as long as we provide the required qualifying open space. This was all argued in 2010. I, I, you, I don't care, I mean, read the decision.
Yeah, when I, 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 when I read, looked over the decision, I guess I didn't read in the same detail, but I read it as it was Belmont Terrace or Belmont Place, is that area?
This is not a strip along Belmont Terrace. This is, this refers to this strip along Dorchester.
But why would, why would the township have to accept a, a strip of land?
They don't have to, they don't have to accept it. We provided it, it can be owned by the homeowners association.
At sixty, well, it's, it's about sixteen inches wide. I mean, it's supposed to be actively...
I don't care if it's four inches wide. It, it was on the plan, the judge looked at it, the judge determined that it prevented those lots from being reverse frontage lots. That's the issue you have as to whether they're reverse frontage lots. The court determined that those lots were not reverse frontage lots.
Okay, we'll look into it. Uh, next comment is, uh, comment C3, which is also a, I'm sorry, did anyone have any comment on that? I'll talk to us, or do you want to wait till...
Before you get further into it, I just wanted to address something that was on page, uh, two of your letter, which you say, uh, the zoning ordinance, uh, including amendments after nineteen ninety-seven to June one, two thousand and eleven. Uh, the applicability of the zoning ordinance is what existed as of May twenty-seven, two thousand and six, and you have the June one, two thousand and eleven in two places.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that any of the comments are applicable to the right zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Going into C3, um, so what we're talking about there is that the proposed lot twenty-one, uh, which is one of the existing, uh, structures, uh, will have an existing garage in the new front yard. And so what we're saying is that, that this is a, that's not allowable. You can't have a, a accessory structure in the front yard.
Yes, uh, I, I can address that. Uh, that is one of the outbuildings that the historic commission took a look at, and, uh, they're gonna go out and take, I had a meeting the other evening, they're gonna go take a look at it. As far as we're concerned, we can, we're happy to take it down. It doesn't need to be there, um, if it has historicals significance. Uh, and I'd ask them that they, uh, proposed to the supervisors, uh, a waiver to allow it to be there. So I'm fine with taking, it's just a...
Well, why wouldn't you, like, redo the plan so that there's enough land there that you can do that?
So, so that garage is right here.
Yeah.
We, we actually put, uh, we, we, uh, bent it, we bent, excuse me, we bent the lot line so that it could have a side yard and remain. It's, I have a picture of it right here.
Well, why not? I mean, it might mean you, you have less lots on the property, but if you move the road, um, so that you allowed enough room for that garage? The only way that garage can be in the rear of the structure that it relates to is if the road were in that spit of right of...
No, but it couldn't be in the front as long as there's enough frontage, right?
No, no, it has to be a rear yard.
You can't ever put, you can't put the garage in the front of the property?
No, it has to be in the rear yard.
Okay.
Behind us.
Okay, sorry.
So that, uh, that's a matter, I think, of the supervisors determining whether they think historically they wanna keep it or, or not, and, uh, so I'm, I'm good either way with that.
So the next comment I'll direct you to is, uh, comment C number twelve, which is on page number six. Uh, that comment says that no fence or wall may be built within the legal right-of-way or within five feet of a cartway, which is, whichever is greater. And what we're commenting on is that on Sedgley Lane, which is the accessway from, uh, Valley Forge Road twenty-three up into the subdivision, has a retaining wall within the, uh, right-of-way, and, uh, we're saying that's, that's not in compliance. Uh, on the east side of, uh, Sedgley Lane, it's the longer length of wall. Uh, on the western side of Sedgley Lane, it's a shorter length of wall. And I wanna note that on, on the east side, it's basically pavement, curb, and then the wall. And, and when you think about the safety of this, you don't wanna have a curb and a wall, 'cause it's gonna accentuate a drop should a vehicle, person fall. On the, uh, western side, it's pavement, curb, then there's a little bit of sidewalk and grass, and then the wall, all of which is within the fifty feet, uh, uh, right-of-way for Sedgley Lane.
Just a, a comment on that. If, if, if the planning commission and supervisors ultimately think that a narrower cartway, um, is, uh, most, uh, I guess, more desirable, then that wall obviously can be mitigated. So, uh, if you want the thirty-two foot wide, we're gonna need a wall there, so...
Can you, can you build up the land and make the wall further away from the cartway? Is that impossible, or...
Um, we'll take a look at that a little bit. When we, when we were last here, since the planning commission was looking at reducing the cartway width, we could take care of it, which is great. So, uh, if that's not, uh, we'll have to figure out how to, how to do that. I, I know it can't prevent, John, you may be able to answer this, I know it can't prevent the roads from being built.
Yeah, that was, that was part of Judge Nagel's decision as well, uh, on the, the grading and walls, if, if they're necessary to provide access to the property. So, uh, we'll look at it, uh, but we certainly would like to hear back whether there's a recommendation to decrease the width of that, 'cause that would make it much easier to grade. It's the fact that you've got nine feet on each side, uh, at most to, uh, to grade it.
Uh, the next comment I would like to direct your attention to is on both pages eight and nine. It is comment B number five, and I'll just stand up just to guide, to help guide and improve what's going on here. So, what I'm, what I'm gonna do is, I'll bring it out, this area right here on the Sedgley Lane, and between those two lots on Dorchester. Paul, I, I missed that. What you... No, that's fine. So, I'll go to this side so everyone can see it. So that, what, the next that I'm gonna talk about is gonna be an area right here, this common lot area between, uh, this is Chapelview Estates. Uh, I know this is lot number three, not lot number four off the top of my head, I don't know what the UPI numbers are, but I just wanna give you perspective of what this comment is going to be about. So, so with that, there, uh, the applicant is proposing a storm sewer system that starts with a head wall, which is on the upstream side, which would be on the, uh, I'm gonna Paul, it's the west side, which is the height, like, the high side of this planned view that you're looking for. And that is, they're proposing a head wall there to collect drainage, and, uh, our first comment there on, uh, part A of that is, is that the head wall is going to be, uh, it, it's very close to the existing property line on that Belmont Terrace, and it's also lower than the, than the existing grade. So there, one of our concerns there is that, uh, between having to put in some stabilization, some riprap, it's going to encroach onto the, onto the adjoining property. Secondly, the proposed improvements there is the head wall is gonna have two inlets on Sedgley Lane, and then the applicant is proposing to go into an existing storm easement that is, that is shared between, uh, two properties on Chapelview Estates, UPI twenty-seven-dash-six forty-eight three and UPI twenty-seven-dash-six forty-eight point four. Uh, again, I'll just call them Chapelview Estate lots three and four. Um, the applicant is looking to tie their storm sewer system directly into that area. That easement that is presently existing has a existing depression, a forty-two inch head wall, and the pipe that goes into the storm sewer system of Chapelview Estates. The reason why, uh, this comment is brought up is that they are connecting into this easement, and this easement, uh, is for lot, is for the community, Chapelview Estates, lots three and four. Uh, the, the Reeves property was not named as a beneficiary, beneficiary of this easement, and therefore have no right to just necessarily tie into it.
Wouldn't it make sense to do that, though?
It's not the easement to tie into. It's, 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 the, the, the pipe and head wall is owned, is, is the, it's not owned by the homeowners association, it's shared between lots three and number four at Chapelview Estates.
So would they, would they have to get approval from those two residents?
Yes.
To do that?
Yes, because they are not...
Have they gotten that?
This is the low area where all of the area above it drains to and goes down. The, the water from north of, from...
The, the water from north of, from west of our panhandle, that water flows down, collects through there, and comes down. That's why the development below us has an inlet there, because the water from above and off that property is flowing there. All we're doing is providing that flow in the same place. So, we have a riparian easement to allow our water to go there. Most of it's not our water, most of it's coming from off-site. And secondly, as Ms. Cohen said, we thought it was better to connect them instead of letting it flow out from our property, overland for a few feet, down and collect another head wall.
Right.
So, we thought it was an appropriate way to handle it, and we do have a right to have our water flow there.
It sounds like you're being considerate of nature and what it's doing.
So, I understand. I don't believe that the easement, which goes all the way up to the property line, isn't intended to be an easement to protect that the water coming through there has a right to go. But, that's our response to the comment. The other issues that are in there, A through D, probably don't need to go through with all of us tonight, we can have Jeremy go through them with Paul, as we look at the design of that.
So, you just explained, oh, what the riparian easement is, and you mentioned what it means?
What it means is, there's a channel or flow of, there's a low point, a low swale of, of the property that collects water from above. And the people whose, whose water it is that comes down there have a continuing right in law to allow their water to go there. That's what's known as a riparian easement.
There's no document, there's no written easement, this is a common law easement you're talking about, right?
I, I haven't researched it because I just saw this today. I know that that's where the water comes from. If you have documentation you want us to look at as to whether it's a specific easement or a common law easement, that's fine. But from our standpoint, either way, all we're doing is keeping the water going where it comes now.
As I, as I recall, that was the recommendation of the previous engineer, is how to tie that in, the previous township engineer.
I, just going along with this, again, the, that land is owned by lots three and lots four. And, and, and it's, it's clearly stated that on the Chapelview Estates, and that's why I want to bring it to your attention, that going on to that easement, you know, the applicant is not a benefactor, beneficiary of that easement, it would have to be granted access.
But it, it's still a public safety kind of thing, a riparian buffer, and what they're planning to do is practical and appropriate.
If our water goes there now, we don't need an easement for where our water naturally goes. So, I disagree with you that we would need to somehow obtain an easement from those two inlets. They're burdened by the fact that their water goes there.
But you're tying into, you're, 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 you're saying I have the benefit to go into an existing easement that is owned by two other partners?
If you wish us to stop, to end up with our discharge being at our property line and have it go over ground for 50 feet until it gets to that inlet for their pipe, fine, we'll do that. We, we...
Yeah, but that's not, that's not good, that's not good practice, right?
The prior township engineer recommended that we do this.
Yeah, and have you talked to those neighbors to get their permission?
As I said, we don't need the permission to do that.
Excuse me, one of the reasons it was raised is because the township has been the recipient of a number of complaints about water flooding onto those properties, and we don't know whose water it is or where it came from, but it's a concern to some of the neighbors, and, and it should be addressed.
And I would also like to add that in comment number D, where we're talking about the improvements here, the existing end wall, that's a 42-inch, compared to the new inlet that's going to be put into the easement as proposed by the applicant, it's almost about five feet higher. And as we were looking at that, and the drainage on the adjoining properties, we noted that lots two through four would all be impacted significantly by, you know, raising that area by five feet and some flooding, as well as lot number one, which is the closest one to Valley Forge. So, we had concerns with, with that. I know that they're, they're talking about changing what they're going to propose, but I did want to make sure that you were aware that in the event that this would go forth, it wouldn't be just restricted to the area of that easement, it would chase on to these adjoining property owners to, to, to do the proper grading that would need to get the water to where it's...
So, the way forward management scheme is not ideal, is where we stand from ways designed.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
It's not ideal the way it's, it's being proposed, based on where you are. If it's going to run and include, and impact existing properties with additional water, then that's not the right solution, right?
I don't want to say it's additional water. I want to say that, that by raising it up, the, right now, it's a big, like, depression, and they're proposing to, to run a pipe, to put an inlet, which is going to raise everything about five feet. The backyards here also have to be, provide the proper drainage, and as we were looking at it, there was no proposed design shown there. We have concerns that a, a group of lots, existing lots, will be negatively impacted by this outside of this easement.
Okay.
And, and our understanding of the situation right now, because if you remember, all we have there is a gravel driveway, which is a grade, and we're, it's not generating the water that's getting to those backyards. Our intent is to try and design it to control that water, because we're putting in collection methods to try and prevent...
You're also putting in asphalt, right?
Yeah.
So, you're taking pervious grading, make it impervious. So, you've got to control that water, is that, I'm not missing that, right?
No, so, a couple of things, we're going to try to reduce the flow that's going there right now, pre, to post. We're going to use, hopefully, curbs. And curbs will direct the water that may be going where it's not supposed to, or going on to other properties right now. And, you know, I, I agree, we need to get the right solution to this. This was, again, you know, from the previous engineer's idea, how to connect it, there's, we could look at it.
In its own way, it makes sense to do so, as you've suggested.
Well, yes, obviously, it has to be, something has to be done, but we also have to make sure that we're protecting the people's interests, that we're representing, that their yards and basements aren't going to be flooding because of change in the grading.
No, but if it's, if it's a, a broader effort involving the property owners, they could see improvements to the water flow based on the new development coming through, and making improvements to the way the drainage is happening.
Well, I think that point needs to be proven.
I agree.
Right, I, I agree. We'll take a look at it and try to do it best.
And as we suggested, that would certainly be a discussion in a meeting of engineers and, and Todd, to try and do something that is consistent with what the township thinks is the best solution, and what we can achieve.
Thank you.
All right, so the, the next comment I'd like to direct your attention to is D eight, which is shared on pages nine and 10 of the letter. And what that comment is talking about is the infiltration testing that was completed for the projects. The development has several different areas designated as stormwater management areas, and they, these areas are all underground facilities, and for lack of a better description, they're, they're utilizing a milk crate system, which is a very strong plastic boxes where stormwater drainage comes into and collects into these, these milk crates, and the water rises up and infiltrates out or is outlet accordingly. And like I said, these are all underground facilities. And in going through the report, the stormwater management report that was concluded, we had some, some concerns about the infiltration testing results that were provided. There were, from what we understand, there were about 34 test pits that were dug, and there were a total of 12 percolation tests that were completed. And, and, and that is not always a negative. When, when someone goes out there and they digs, they dig a test pit, the geologist will, will quickly be able to discern if this is a place where we want to do a, a percolation test or not, depending on soil stratum and things like that. But what I do want to note is that in a couple particular areas, like, let's say stormwater management F, they had two test pits there, test pit five and test pit six. Test pit five had an infiltration rate of seven and a half inches. Test pit six had an infiltration of a half an inch, and the analysis used seven inches. So, it was a very aggressive infiltration rate to assume on two of, on, on just two test pits. Additionally, there was no factor of safety involved. Usually, when you do these, these infiltration tests, you do a factor of safety, which is almost like you cut it in half. So, if it has an infiltration rate of five, you say it's two and a half, just to, just to make sure that if there's a failure or an anomaly in the soil stratum, that there's not a problem. Also, in stormwater management area B, they are utilizing the test pits 29 and 30, there was no percolation tests available for those. So, we, we have no idea how to justify that. And then stormwater management A had, had a test pit in there, which was number 27, and they, and they also used test pit 28, which is about 100 feet away from the stormwater management area. So, what we're, what we're commenting there is that we have concerns about the infiltration rates that are being shown on the stormwater management plan. We would like a, a geologist to go out there to either redo these tests, let us know what kind of percolation tests are being completed out there, double ring infiltrometer. Additionally, these tests are old, so these tests should be revisited at this point. The, I should note...
These tests are old, how old are we talking?
I believe these were from 2008. Jeremy?
2008 would have been the originals, the worst subsequent tests for the original plans, but the ones from 2003 are just that old. So, and with the revisions to the design, we've already discussed to do...
Additional testing.
All right, thank you. And the other thing, too, I would like to note as well, is that the, as the township is going through this review, and we're, we're going with the SALDO, the subdivision land development ordinance and the zoning ordinances that were current with the original application, the Chester County Conservation District, the DEP, PennDOT, et cetera, they, they are not beholden to the original application date. So, when the applicant is looking to get the approvals from these agencies, they will be looking at it at, you know, a different stratum. And I fully would anticipate that the conservation district and the DEP, if it gets to that level, would want to take a look at new infiltration rates and would, you know, challenge the applicant to provide some new...
I guess I would agree with the percolation tests being redone if they're that old. I mean, I'm working on a job in the city of Philadelphia, seven months, I had to go back and do them this week. So, something that's from 2008 seems to me to be way too old to, to hold a data on that.
And just, but just to give you perspective as well, we're doing our preliminary plan consistent with the ordinance section. But as Ms. Cohen knows, because we've had this discussion since the start of this, Mr. English, too, I guess, the Aqua doesn't like infiltration along its reservoir. It wants that water to get to the reservoir as quickly as possible. So, once we have a design that meets your ordinance, the final plan, we'll be back with Aqua to talk about what adjustments they might want the township to make so that the water gets there quickly.
Yeah. I'll just add to that a little bit. You know, one of the things that we could potentially do here is, is a, I guess, a better stormwater management system because of two reasons. One is when Aqua showed us the hydrographs for any storm that's going to be upstream here, the idea of us obtaining water and adding it to their, to the flow when it comes down is kind of a negative. So, in, in high water time, on high flow times through the reservoir, they would like our water to come out and get over the dam rather than wait for, delay it. The second thing is, and as you may know, in low water times, they're actually pumping out of the Schuylkill River to keep the, keep the reservoir up, so they could use our water in low, low times. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned, but is part of this discussion that we're talking about right now, is the idea of recharge. And certainly, the idea of recharge is, is overall a really good one, because we're replenishing the, the groundwater table, and that's the idea, we put impervious cover on the surface, how we get the water used to drain in there and go. Turns out, on this particular property, because of the reservoir, we're really supercharging the groundwater table, it's kind of, the reservoir's kind of supercharging underneath our property to the tip of what was the groundwater level from the streams that were there. So, those two things, Aqua says, can you give us better stormwater quality, spend money that you would do there, and give us better stormwater quality? So, there's some things we can do there. Again, we need to get approval of where we're going, and then I think it makes sense for us to take some time and see if we can't get a better stormwater management system just because of the location of this property under the reservoir.
Thank you. It makes sense to talk to Aqua and to formulate a collaborative approach that benefits everyone, because Route 23 got flooded last year, if you recall, with the storm. So, how, how you manage water makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and unfortunately, what we need to do first, though, is show that we could do the stormwater management in compliance with your ordinance, so that it's not a question of us coming in to ask to do something substandard. Once we get a preliminary plan with compliance, we can then talk about at final plan, what we might do to achieve a better situation.
And it's a little surprising, but we can, you know, cross that bridge when we need to, but that would...
Good times.
That Aqua would not want all that lawn fertilizer getting into the reservoir that quickly, rather than infiltrating, but...
That's, that's what they're talking about. Can we do something, put regulations in our development? And this was easy to do with the BRD plans, because we had open space, and we had a homeowners association whereby we wouldn't put those kind of, that kind of stuff on the grass, those chemicals on the grass would go right into water. So, that's what they would like us to try to, exactly what you're saying, they would rather us try to make restrictions for that.
The next comment I'd like to talk about would be comment E 15, which is on page 16. Again, this is, this is talking about East Philip Drive, and I know we've, we spoke about it earlier, our feelings about it being a secondary feeder and needing a 38, 60-foot carway. I, I don't need to fully revisit that since we already had the discussion, and we'll look at the decisions. But again, it was our opinion that it's a secondary feeder.
Which, which section were you, I missed the...
It's, I'm sorry, it's comment E, or it's comment E 15.
I was still in the...
Sorry about that, sorry.
So, is it, is it number 15? Is that what you're talking about?
15, E 15, it's on page number 16.
Yeah, on page 16.
15, the one at the top.
It's number 15.
At the top, that's what I thought.
So, so again, I don't, I don't mean to belabor, but again, it was, it was, it was one of the bigger comments, in my opinion. Going into, the next comment would be E 21, which is, again, I apologize, shared on pages 17 and 18. And I'd like to, I'll just get up and kind of, to show you what I'm talking about over here in the session.
What was the other one?
So, as I'm describing this, I'm talking about East Philip Drive, the cul-de-sac, and then the East Philip Drive connection coming into Eagle's Point right here. So, the way I'm drawing, drawing my pen down here is what I'm going to try to explain to everyone. Excuse me. So, our concern here is, is that when, with the select sites and the cul-de-sac bowl turning there, if you are a car driving on East Philip Drive and you're heading in towards the, to the Reeves tract, now I need you to, to just imagine that you, you have your car, you're driving along straight, you have to bank your car to the right to go into the cul-de-sac bowl, because the, the connection to East Philip is offset. You can see how it has that little turn there. So, you're driving straight on East Philip, you bank your car to your right, you got to then bank it to the left, you probably have a little... you gotta then bank it to the left, you probably have a little bit of a tangent, and then you gotta back it to the right again. And then if you're making the left-hand turn onto, you gotta turn that way. The whole configuration of this, uh, is, is, in simple terms, it's called horizontal curves. And it's a reverse curve if you don't have a proper amount of tangent. And what I'm trying to explain is that when you're driving a car and you turn the wheel, roads are designed so that the driver will then straighten out the wheel and be able to go this way again. Having a, a motion where you're doing like this is not optimal. Now, this is a residential street, but again, there are requirements for tangencies and har- and reverse curves. And the, uh, the plans themselves didn't show anything there, but when you look at it, you, you can recognize the fact that there could be a situation where the existing bulb doesn't have the issue. But the through traffic, the con- that would be going to the Reeves, uh, tract has this turning motion that we're concerned with. So what we're asking the applicant is to take a look at this situation, look at the radius that are provided, and make sure that the proper tangents and, uh, reverse curves are eliminated.
Including the fifty FedEx trucks that are like, uh, you know, that are boxy and it's pretty big, yeah?
Anything, trash trucks.
So to, to answer that, uh, question, the, uh, East Philip Drive, the two-set plan, the geometry is actually on that cul-de-sac because it's a, it's a fifty scale block. We do, we do show that we comply with the hundred and fifty foot centerline radius, a hundred foot tangent in between the curves. Then we intersect with, uh, Sedgley, our, our proposed development. At, um, it's radial to the, to, because if you're on a, um, a radial turn there. So we're coming off of that at a ninety-degree intersection, even though it's a radial connection.
Single.
It's still coming at, at more than sixty-degree minimal, as you referenced in the review letter.
Alright, so you're saying that, so from understanding what you just said correctly, there is, the proper tangencies, there's no reverse curves, and the proper tangent lengths are provided for that entire run?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll look into that.
If you look at the, the two-sheet plan for East Philip Drive, all the geometry's on that block because the cul-de-sac is there.
Okay.
I'll, I have one, uh, uh, comment. A lot of projects I've been involved with, when they have a cul-de-sac that's dislodge with that amount of paving in there. We've done, uh, center-planted islands. This would be, uh, potentially a really good place for one of those. It helps, A, slow traffic, and B, gets everybody going around and turning and entering the drive. I just throw it out as an idea, but we've used that, that concept on other projects.
I like that idea.
Alright, so then, um, going into, uh, Comment, uh, uh, E twenty-four, again, uh, which is on page eighteen and nineteen. Again, we're, we're talking about the, the classification of the road of both East Philip and Sedgley Lane. We have our opinions, uh, that we feel as if that's a secondary collector. And we'll have to look at the legal decision and determine if it is applicable to that situation. Next comment that I had noted was, uh, Comment E twenty-nine, which is on page number twenty. So what we're talking about there is that the sidewalks to be provided along all streets. And presently, the applicant, uh, is, is not showing any sidewalks uh, along the portion of Eagles Point Road where the, uh, Arch Culvert is going to be located. Uh, so that there's a, there's a break in the connectivity of that area. Um, and, and we're questioning if they're going to propose that. And secondly, we wanted, we were, uh, wanted to see the sidewalk on both sides of the roads, uh, throughout the community. We're going to recommend that for this community. Again, the board supervisors can determine what they like, but, uh, it was our opinion that it should be added. So I don't know if you want to address why the, uh, there's no sidewalk on the-
Sure. Yep, happy to. Uh, number one is, we did discuss with the planning commission, uh, where the sidewalks would be. And, uh, they were comfortable with sidewalks on one side. That's why we're showing them there. That was a direct discussion with the previous planning commission. The other thing is that we were going to have this emergency access. And we were actually bringing the sidewalk to that and having that be part of the connection so that they're not, so walking is not happening over the bridge. So that, that's in particular why we did that.
But the, but, okay, but there's, that's only twelve feet wide, and that's, that's to be used by traffic if needed, and it's not ADA compliant. It's not, it doesn't, it, it doesn't have the proper slope. So there is a disconnect of the sidewalk and the ADA compliance with this.
Yeah.
It goes over four percent, uh, across slope over there.
Okay, yeah.
I was saying like-
Yeah. We could take a look at that. The idea was to keep the people off the bridge and have them walk around the side.
I understand, and I, I mean, I, I don't know if I feel comfortable saying that people are going to use an emergency access way as the sidewalk.
Well, the sidewalk feeds into it and then comes out of it. So if you're walking on, uh, the paved area that you're, the concrete area that you're supposed to be on, it takes you to that and then drops you off. So I don't think there'll be a, an issue of visual, uh, misunderstanding. The question of whether we need ADA is an issue that we'll have to take a look at because we obviously would ask it.
And, but also we have to deal with the fact that it's the emergency access. So in the event that there's an emergency and the road can't be used, somebody who has to use this is sharing it with vehicle, two-way vehicular traffic with no sidewalk.
And if there's an emergency and that's being used, then if the sidewalk went over the bridge, that's where the emergency would be and they wouldn't be walking there anyway. So I, you know, I, I, I discount that concern of it. But I will, we will certainly look at the ADA issue of it.
Does that tell me, are you planning, is there a plan for an emergency access? It's not, it's not, it's not shown as an emergency access on this plan. Is this, what's this, what's the story with the emergency access?
Answer my question as to whether you're talking about it as, quote, "an official emergency access" or as a facility that can be used in the case of an emergency. That's what this is. Because it, it, there is no way to have emergency access to the south on this property because of the, it's an official one. Because of the separation requirement between the, the existing access and the emergency access. You can't, you can't, there's no way unless you build a second bridge across property owned by Aqua to have a second access to that south. There's the existing driveway, which has simply recently been repaired and paved. And that will be connected to the road system. So that if, uh, there is a reason that the culvert crossing is blocked and can't be used, a vehicle, whether it's an emergency vehicle, whether it's somebody needing to exit from the back, will be able to use that driveway to get out of there. That's what is intended by the continued existence of, of that, uh, driveway crossing at the current culvert. It's, uh, it's not an official emergency access. I hate to label it as that and then get into an issue of whether it's noncompliant because it's not intended to be. There's not a requirement that there be one in any ordinance or in the fire code. But we're providing that anyway, since it's there, as a tied-in, uh, feature to our street so that if it serves somebody and benefits somebody, they can use it in, in a situation where they can't use the regular road.
So basically, the south side of the property has only one means of access. And the north side, which is less houses, will have, will have two.
But once you travel over to the north side, you've got two.
Yeah. Kind of, that's, that's interesting geometry there.
Yeah. We've done, we've done a study of other developments in, in your township, and there are a number of them, including right across the reservoir from this. There are two where there's one road into the development and a long loop. And only, and that's the only way in. So it, it's not unusual, uh, for this size, uh, on the south side to have one means of, of access. What we've done is taken the precaution that since that one means of access goes over a culvert, which some of the others do, uh, maybe not as deep a ravine that the culvert's in, that we at least have a bypass around that could be used if needed.
Alright, um, I guess the next comment I would talk about, uh, his comment, excuse me, E thirty-three, which is found on page twenty-one. Again, uh, this is going back to the, uh, consideration of the lots on Dorchester Lane, now becoming a double frontage lots. Uh, I just wanted, I know we've had a discussion on that, but I do want to just note that, uh, a concern with this would be that with a double frontage lot, there would be the creation of existing nonconformities, which would be any sheds, tennis courts, pools in the backyard, as well as if any of these applicants in the future would want to put in a pool, a shed, or something that would be in their front yard, so they would have to seek zoning relief in that situation.
What number and what page? I lost track of where you were. What number, what page?
E thirty-three, page twenty-one.
Okay, so I am on the right page, thank you.
Sure.
And by the way, there was just one other part of that discussion in Judge Snegel's opinion, and that is that the prohibition was against creating double frontage lots, which was interpreted to mean within your subdivision. Not creating somebody else's lot, uh, from an existing subdivision is now a double frontage lot. But that, that was also part of his discussion.
I'm surprised there's ambiguity about that. That must be something that's dealt with a lot, and, uh-
Yeah, well, you had two sections that, the question was, do you read them together? Do you read them apart? What do they mean? And, uh, it, it was an interesting discussion, in that, I mean.
So Paul, you'll check that out and give us a-
Yeah, but, yeah.
We're looking at it. I'm trying to understand what Judge Mayne said. That's what he said, it's controlling, sometimes. There's, uh, he just changed the angle, he's like, well, we're better.
I'm an engineer, not a lawyer.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine. Um, next comment, uh, to talk about would be, uh, uh, again, uh, E thirty-eight, which is on page twenty-two. And, uh, we had, we have talked about this. And, uh, again, this is talking about the open space should be reasonably located to serve all the residents, et cetera. I do want to note that in, uh, my comments here in both Comment A and Comment B, I used the square footage based off of the two thousand and eight plan. So where it says eight hundred and thirty-four square feet, uh, for, uh, open space two, it should be one thousand one hundred and fifty-one. That was an error I made, I was looking at between both plans. Um, and on, uh, Comment B, it says twenty thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. That should actually read twenty thousand five hundred and nineteen square feet. So there is modest increase on each of these. Again, I, I, I defer to these as being, they are less than a quarter acre and less than seventy-five feet wide. They, they don't, they aren't usable active recreation areas for this. I know we've already spoken about that. But that, that was my concerns with, uh, E thirty-eight.
And, uh, just, just to comment on that, I believe we'll be able to get that requirement without the, without the other spaces. We should be able, we should be able to handle that.
There's, the open space that's really intended to be provided for use by the residents is down in the bottom corner where you see the green, uh, where there's, uh, view of the, of the reservoir, uh, an area that, uh, has view of the Eagles Trust Way and so forth. That was what was intended to be the compliant open space. The fact that the others are labeled open space, maybe they should be labeled HOA property. We don't, we don't care, uh, but the, the compliant requirement, we believe we meet in the green area.
That makes sense because I remember, um, our Environmental Advisory Council had a discussion, one of the former supervisors, Jim Morrison, actually counted eagles on the property. And it was that, would be nice if this open area is, um, corresponds to where the eagles have the most activity. It's just, it's this past tense coming into the present tense.
Continuing on-
They don't need ground, they fly high.
Continuing on to, uh, Comment E forty-four, which is on page twenty-four. Um, this is, uh, in relation to the stormwater management for the site. And, uh, the way that the site stormwater management was analyzed is that they, uh, looked at it as drainage areas, south and north. South being the portion basically over to the left of the exhibit you see, uh, in front of you. North being to the, to the right, the, the smaller, slender, uh, portion. What we want to, what we're talking about there is that, uh, for the drainage, uh, areas for the south side, again, which is on, which is the bigger side, the, uh, post-development rates, uh, exceed what's allowable for the twenty-five, fifty, and the hundred-year storm events. They have, uh, the applicant has looked at this as a, uh, both drainage areas in unison with each other. But the, uh, the stormwater management practice is that it, you know, I'm looking at these individually. And, uh, in, in going a little bit further down into Comment forty-five, which is on page twenty-four as well, I note that I feel as if there should be additional drainage points to be analyzed pre- and post-developed. They are looking at two specific ones, almost showing where, you can see where those, those, those arrows are on the bottom areas, the water is dripping. We're calling the water drainage areas here and here. Where we feel as if there's a drainage shed here, there's one here, there's one over here, and there's one over here. And that's what we're saying, that they are looking at it as a whole, but you have to look at each individual drainage shed and apply the pre- and post-reductions accordingly. So those were the comments, basically forty-four and forty-five. Forty-four is, is, what I'm saying is that three of the storm events are greater than what they should be. And forty-five, I'm saying there should be multiple points of interest of the stormwater management being reviewed. Any questions? I'll proceed forward.
Ultimately, it all gets to the reservoir. It, that's the point.
No, I, I, I under- I understand, Mr. Paul. Like, I was just saying that according to, I'm going with the ordinance and the ordinance says that, you know, shall be released to the nearest waterway or down some property in the manner of the pre-developing conditions. So that's why it's, it's bisected.
It's in the manner of the pre-developing conditions, it is, uh, if it's, just, I, I just started that page. Uh, because there's no comment in that sentence. So that if it's released to the nearest waterway, uh, it's not in a manner similar to pre-development conditions. It's if it's on downslope property, it has to be in a manner. You'd need a comment if it was still applied above the next.
I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
When you talked to Jeremy and Todd, they know that, I believe.
Okay. Uh, next comment is fifty-five, or, excuse me, is E fifty-five, which can be found on, uh, Sheets twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Now, uh, the comments on this is, is speaking about that, uh, in some locations, we feel as if there is encroachment of disturbance that would go on to neighboring properties. In particular, um, degrading on the, uh, Sedgley Lane and Eagles Point Valley Forge Road. Uh, we feel that the top and the bottom wall elevations, uh, they're, they're not labeled. So we really don't have an idea if it's going to drift on or off there. So we're asking that, uh, the applicant provide top of wall, bottom of wall elevations to make sure that there is no grading going on to adjoining properties. Uh, the, uh, second part, uh, again, we're on page twenty-eight, this is B. Uh, this is talking about the inber grade of the H four head wall, uh, which, which is located over here on the high side of Sedgley Lane. That is a couple feet below what is, uh, existing, uh- That is a couple feet below what is existing grade, and the concern is that there will be grading that's going to chase on to property that is not, that does not belong to the applicant. The third point is C, which is the cul-de-sac at the end of Eagles Point South, and it's going into a proposed existing residential driveway. What we're talking about is this, this parcel right here. This property owner is essentially landlocked. They utilize the existing driveway for Reeves tract, for the access. The applicant is proposing to put in a new driveway off of the cul-de-sac, which will go on to their property. But again, it is grading that is on to an adjacent property, not owned by the applicant. And finally, a portion of proposal lot thirty-nine against the adjoining property line. We feel as if there could be grading going on to that property. We just are looking for a little bit more detail that the applicant can provide us. So that is, the applicant obviously cannot grade on to adjoining properties, so that's why we're commenting on that.
So that property there, that's not on the-
Just on there, you're talking this one, sir?
Yeah. And that, so they currently have a right-of-way to use the Reeves property to get there, to get on and off their property?
Yeah, I can answer that. I'm familiar with that. The Makala five-acre out parcel has an easement over the Reeves property to utilize the stone driveway. So their access in and out of that property right now actually takes the existing driveway location. You can see it come here, comes across here, and goes out. They also have the obligation to pay for a third of the maintenance of that. So I think the son-in-law from previous Reeves were, that's where that property came from, and so it was a family situation. But at one time, it was a fifty-fifty split of the share, and now it was redone, it's a third.
And will they be granted access then to the roads as part of the Eagle Point development?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is replace their easement with direct access to a public road. So that's the, that was the idea of ending the cul-de-sac and giving them a hundred foot, five-foot frontage at that location. If you look at the right-of-way, we're providing a hundred and five foot, so it has frontage on a public road. And they'd be responsible, by the way, for that connection to their driveway. We're also providing the ability to tie it into our sewer and get public water. So we're trying to bring them up to speed.
And, but we're not changing their property lines at all?
Not touching their property lines.
Right.
All right. The next comment I'll direct your attention to is F one, which is on page number thirty. This is under the general comments, and this is talking about the PennDOT permits that will be required, in particular to Valley Forge Road and Segley Lane. The first comment, one A, talks about the existing site distance. It's shown on the plans as being five hundred and fifty feet on either side of Segley Lane. And although this is a PennDOT road, and we'll defer to it, we wanted to note that there is, there was no vertical profile shown. So when you have a site distance, you take, you take a look at where the eyes of the driver would be, and you, and you strike a profile of the two views. And there was none provided to verify that there was no obstructions, or the adequate five hundred and fifty-foot site distance has been provided. PennDOT will certainly be looking for that, but we wanted to make note of it, that that was not provided at this time. Comment one B is talking about the opposing left turn movements that would be occurring at the intersection of both Dorchester Way and Moorhead Road, and then Segley Lane on, or Segley Lane and Valley Forge Road. And what I'm trying to explain there is that I'm just going to use the very, the term, the suicide lane. You have people that are going to be coming up, and they're going to try to be making a left-hand turn in the Segley Lane, and you're going to have people trying to use the same exact access way to make a left-hand turn into Moorhead, or, excuse me, Moor Hall Road. The length of that is about two hundred and fifteen feet, and the posted speed limit is forty, forty-five miles per hour. So the concern that I'm listing there is that you're going to have opposing traffic trying to utilize the same lane in a distance of two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty feet, traveling at a speed limit of forty-five miles per hour, both trying, making left-hand turns. So like, again, I called it suicide lane, but, you know, it's, it's a situation that I don't think is safe for the township residents.
Well, will PennDOT kind of rule on that, or?
PennDOT will certainly have-
So you're highlighting it, but it's PennDOT is really the ruling authority there?
PennDOT is, is the ruling authority over this, because it's, but I want to make sure that the township, you know, planning commission, the board supervisors are aware of the situation that, you know, is ideal for being safe.
Yeah. Paul, let me just interject one thing. Back at the time that this plan was being considered, and before we, the passage of the PRD ordinance in its place, PennDOT issued the highway occupancy permit for this intersection. So it's, we know what's needed. It's already issued that permit. That permit has lapsed, so it has to be issued again. But the issues were reviewed by PennDOT at the time of issuing that permit, and so we would expect that it would be reissued. But if there's something additional we have to do, that's what we have to do to get our PennDOT permit. So we understand that.
Obviously, the traffic is one of the major comments, or concerns, if not the greatest. And we understand the role that PennDOT has to play in this, in terms of reissuing, or, you know, doing whatever they have to do to deal with another permit application. But the subdivision, the SADO, requires a traffic study. And the concern I have is how can the supervisors, you know, effectively make a decision on the plan without themselves having a good feel for what's going to happen here, you know, at that intersection? The way it's shaping up, I'm hoping that the board, my understanding was that you're proposing that the decision, you know, be pushed back to final plan. At that point, the township would really have no ability to comment on the, on the traffic situation.
This letter has various traffic comments in it. We don't know who your current traffic engineer is. We were referring your comments to our traffic engineer, so we will have responses. All I was saying and intending to say was that with respect to the issues that PennDOT may need to consider in issuing a permit, it's already done that. So while there are requirements in your ordinance that we'll have to meet, and that we'll look at the issues that are raised in this letter, and have our traffic engineer respond to them, all I was saying was, from the standpoint of being able to permit the, that intersection, it's already been done. It just simply lapsed because of time, not because of anything that was a problem with it.
Just one last comment. We are getting new traffic counts. So they'll be plugged into the new study.
The next comment would be, again, F one, and this is comment number C, again, talking about the same intersection. And here, we're talking about the deceleration lane and the acceleration lane approaching and leaving Segley Lane. Our concern with the deceleration lane is that it's about a hun, it's only about a hundred and five feet wide, and it's not very wide, or, excuse me, a hundred and five feet long, and it's not very wide. So you're going to have cars going at forty-five miles per hour, going off to the shoulder, and then into Segley Lane. So we had a concern with, you know, the speed and the lack of length for the deceleration lane. Additionally, the acceleration lane, which would be leaving Segley Lane and turning right on Valley Forge Road, basically is coincidental with the deceleration lane of Chapelview Estates, you know, entering on Dorchester. So what our concern there is that you're going to have Segley Lane, people turning right, and you're going to have people along Valley Forge Road merging into the same lane. Again, forty-five miles per hour, car, and then the car is coming, trying to accelerate. It just doesn't, doesn't seem like a very safe situation in this, you know, two cars trying to use the same area, trying to do two different things.
Paul, these comments you're making about the traffic, the township asked you to evaluate this plan for the traffic out on Valley Forge Road?
Yeah, well, these are general comments. These are, these are comments-
This is just your opinion?
These are comments that are based off of looking at these plans, and I want to make, I want to present them to the board and to the, to the planning commission. I want you to be aware of this. I don't know if you would be in audience of any-
You're making comments about some things being unsafe, and I just, I want to be careful before, I mean, they're very vague comments, based on your opinion. You're just, I'm just questioning whether in the letter.
I, I'm, as a township engineer, I'm tasked with public safety and welfare. I see a situation that I feel is unsafe. I'm going to put it into a letter. As you can see, I'm not referencing an ordinance. These are general comments.
Okay.
And that's how I wanted it to be addressed. I wanted to make sure that the commissions and the supervisors would be aware of my concerns of this application.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was it for the comments that I wanted to highlight. I don't know if the planning commission or the applicant has any that they would like to particularly discuss, but-
Paul, just a quick question. Would there need to be a suicide lane on White Horse Road where Phillips comes in? Because there'll be all kinds of new traffic there that never existed before.
The challenge, the challenge with South White Horse is that it's a, it's small. It doesn't have the width or the right-of-way to do this. So I don't know if the traffic study would merit the suicide lane or turn lanes, but it's definitely, the way that East Philip Drive is connected to South White Horse, if you're familiar with it, there's a little bit of a dog leg going to West Philip Drive, which is a concern, because you kind of have an offset type of intersection. Additionally, you know, as we were talking about the through traffic, people, motorists trying to avoid the intersection of Valley Forge Road and White Horse Road, they can go, they can take Segley Farm, they can take Eagles Point, they can take East Philip, they can then take West Philip, they can take Penny Tacker, they can, basically, you can, all these residential roads in this area can become inundated by just another extension. I know, based off of a previous application, people were concerned about the cut-through on the other side of the project, but now we're adding a cut-through on this side. So you're going to have a full ability to completely bypass this intersection. And that's a concern.
So will that be included in the traffic work that you're going to-
Yeah, I, I know that was addressed previously, and I think the result of what we could do here is people won't find it, will not benefit them to cut through in terms of, the T intersection was one of those ideas, instead of a swoop intersection. They did timing on it. So the idea is to make sure that this does not become a cut-through. There's enough traffic with just the residents, and the whole idea is prevent the cut-through. And that's the idea of that potentially private as well, having a private connection, is to guarantee that, you know, that we stop the cut-through traffic. There's no guarantees, I'm sorry.
And on the other side of the road in the other development, if you want to avoid the light at White Horse and Route twenty-three, there are stop signs through the development, and you have to go slowly. So there are other things that can be done to keep the traffic flowing at a slow pace through the development.
Again, that was the idea of a stop sign at the T intersection.
I have one last comment, if I can ask. Is, what is the plan for the former Reeves family residence? Is there a plan, like a place for homeowners to meet? I say this because I, I know Sam Reeves, he's a descendant of the family Wilson Peoli, and our museum, which I'm president, received a portrait. I have some other materials about Samuel Reeves, David Reeves, and others, so that there are connections with the School Call River Heritage, center of which I'm president, and also the Phoenixville Historical Society, where people who moved to this development could understand the history of the property and the people who once lived there.
Yeah, so the plan right now, I know with the PRD iterations, we were asking for additional use for that property, could become a clubhouse, for instance. With these single-family, there's not the need for that. So the plan right now would just be a resale of the property.
Resale of the home, you mean?
Resale, yeah. So it would not be a clubhouse in this plan.
Yeah, I thought, I remembered that it was something that was considered at that time. Okay.
Okay. We have some time here before what I'd called as the hard stop. If the members of the public would like to come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we can address your thoughts, listen to your thoughts.
Hi, my name is Al Giovanella, and I've lived here for forty years, actually, on the other side of White Horse Road there. And, and you're right, two thousand and eight was before the, you know, the current climate change situation. And so, you know, in that order, I'm sure it needs to be evaluated. It has a gradient that comes from up near Main Street, and it flows all the way down, and it flows down with a lot of force. And when, a lot of people got water last year, remember that five-inch rain? And I had the guy from PennDOT, I had a guy from PennDOT came down and talked with me, and he said, "Al," he says, "there's nothing I can do to help you." He says, "You and all the people on the other side of White Horse Road, you're, you're living on a floodplain. It's just so you know that. And so, all I ask for you to do is, when you begin changing the water around, or whatever, make sure, like you said, it hits the reservoir, you know, try not to block it up, because everybody here's one have water in their houses if you try and shut it off and go another way. Make sure that people have the water flow to go, to allow the water to flow as, as fast as possible, because it's starting way up on the other sort of White Horse Road, and, you know, it's crumbled bridges and stuff." And the person from PennDOT, he says, "I can't do anything about it. It's a floodplain." So anyway, so, you know, and if you've ever stood on, on that evening in particular, but if you've ever stood in that area and watched the water come down, it's, you know, you can say, "Well, I'm going to fix this, and I'm going to..." But nobody's going to get in front of that water. That water's not, you have to get it through as fast as possible, or it's going to flood everyone out. The other thing, real fast, is about the traffic. And I've lived here when, like I said, from nineteen eighty, when it was before a lot of the houses were built. And I know that, and you talked about White Horse Road, that's kind of gotten out of hand. And I'm afraid somebody's going to lose a kid one of these days. But it's, you're not, since they opened up the new entrance on the turnpike out there, you know, big rigs use White Horse and all. And you're not going to tell people how to drive their car. I mean, you can put lights, you can put this, you can put, I, when I first moved in, and this was back in nineteen eighty, I had to shut, I had a driveway that went from Pickering and a driveway that went on to White Horse. I had to shut the driveway off, White Horse and plant, and fix my lawn in there, because people wouldn't go fifteen more feet and turn the corner. They'd cut across my land-
Wow.
-at forty miles an hour, and I had two little kids at the time. They, they wouldn't go a little bit further. So you're not going to tell people on White Horse how to drive their car. And, you know, it's just, just beware that you're dealing with two, you know, you know, PennDOT believes the climate change is real, and so you're dealing with lots of forces of water. But, you know, it came over top of Route twenty- of water, but, you know, it came over top of Route twenty-three last year, and shut that off. But the other thing, this new generation of driver is, is, you know, something, White Horse is really, really nasty coming, coming out there, and so I just want you to take some of these changes, like climate change, and, and that's the most important one for me, because my wife was crying because our whole life was under this much water, and it was just like a river, and so you have to let it drain, keep draining through as quickly as possible, and, and that's, that's the main one for me, and, and I, the other thing is, is, you know, the traffic situations, I know the people that have kids are, are concerned that there's bus stops all the way along White Horse Road, but, you know, I, I just get worried, because I, I've noticed in places, like you said about Philadelphia, along the Scoobal River, they're building in Mann Young on a plane that was already pushed out with a flood. They're building, they're building there again, so just, you know, we got nobody to stand up for us, so just try and, you know, use your consideration, and, and all these things have people with loved ones and pets and stuff, and that's all. I, I, I can tell that you've looked at some of the forces of water, because it's awesome, it's the most, and it's only going to get worse if climate change is real, and it seems like it is, so, anyway, that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Frank Maturio, on Scoobal Road Lane. Just as a neighbor thought, I live close to where Al is, and I can, I can testify the water situation there. It's, it was pretty nasty. A couple of questions about traffic. So, one thought that I had, something I've thought about before, but you might want to consider, White Horse Lane is a nightmare. You might want to consider either as part of this project, or just as a project in general, putting a couple of speed bumps in there, particularly at the intersection of White Horse and Anderson, or White Horse and Pickering, would be very helpful. The select site, just a clarification in my mind, we talked about, you know, I talked about this a little bit, whether in the final determination, East Oak is a secondary connector or a feeder or a whatever, what would be the consequences for residents between the cul-de-sac and East, and, I'm sorry, White Horse Road? So will there be widening of White Horse Road? Will that be taken by eminent domain, or how would that work? Or is there a situation in which there would be no widening of the road? Oh, sorry. Exit of walk-in, go, exit over to you.
So I don't know exactly how it'll turn out, but I, I don't see there's any reason to widen the road, and if you look at the traffic numbers, that, that we need to update, I don't think they will require a widening of the road on East Oak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Kane, and I live thirty eighth Dorchester Way, which is lot, number six, I was calling. My question is the traffic. Trying to get out of Dorchester Way at seven-thirty in the morning is suicide. You may get a slight gap, and that slight gap is, they're not doing forty-five, they're doing sixty coming down eastbound on twenty-three. Now you're going to have cars coming out of Segley Lane at the same time people are trying to turn left. It's going to be suicide, so please look at that traffic study very carefully. Thank you.
Just added Wells and Magic Memory as well.
Yes.
Eight forty-five East Philip. So I think in the comments, there's a lot of remarks about Phillips Drive and the impact, so from a perspective of the negative impact of Philip, think about us, think about the sidewalks, we don't have the expansion, the eminent domain of our property, the breaking of cul-de-sac that's been there since the nineteen sixties. Be interesting to see from a traffic study perspective, the number of cameras that are caught by the school buses that drive by, so I like to pull up the police reports on that as well. My daughter has to stand back from the stop sign, even though the road's too dangerous. Really, there's a lot of negative impact coming off of the ECL lines that come up White Horse. The, the dogway that you mentioned, the sight line, is very dangerous, there's been accidents by the neighbors pulling out of there to make a left. Traffic already builds, the school, Scoobal, Scoobal Road breaks a lot of traffic in the morning, so please put that in consideration. Stormwater's also an issue. Water comes out of South White Horse into their property. My property got flooded, the storm, culvert is not big enough to handle the water, so my property already gets flooded, which, which is fine, but there's a lot of water that comes off of White Horse and other property. The, the point that you had made with the tendency of the turns, from the graph, you can't see it, I look at the cul-de-sac every day, there is, there is an angle to that, to that drive, so I think that the study should be done to make sure that that tendency is in fact a straight-through tendency. One other factor there, too, is he had mentioned that the subdivision, which I guess is the East Oak Drive subdivision, has some sort of right over that cul-de-sac, is that what I heard? So he had said that he didn't want to argue with the other neighbor in the cul-de-sac to have a straight-through, so he uses the sub, the select plan to get through the cul-de-sac. He had said about a ownership right of that cul-de-sac, and quite, and quite understand that? So who has the voting right for the, the use to drive through that cul-de-sac? Is it just select sites, or is it the subdivision which allows?
It's an individual right of every owner of a lot in that, on that subdivision plan. If they wanted to extend that road through that, that right-of-way that was shown, they're a beneficiary of it, so they could do it. So you could do it if you wanted to connect to the Reeves property. The select sites property can do it, because there are a, a lot in that cul-de-sac. It's not a singular right, and it's not a voting right, it's, it's an individual right of each owner of each lot within that cul-de-sac.
So think about what he's saying there. One person of the twenty-five houses, or whatever houses are on that street, has one voting right to break through that cul-de-sac. Where's my right? I bought the house, I didn't know about this development, and I didn't know about this one right, that one person can break through that cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac that's been there since nineteen sixty.
And it's, and it-
Granted, it's great, hold on, I'm speaking. Granted, it's great planning-
I knew that, I did.
Yeah, great, great planning that we put a cul-de-sac in there, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that one individual can decide to put a street in that road. Just think about that.
It's the law. I understand, this traffic law is law, right? You, you can put that, that, if you're a lawyer, I get it.
Not all lawyers here. There's common sense to a lot of this. So listen, you've heard a lot, you've seen a lot, there's information you need to go through, but these are the facts, it's someone that actually lives there, so I appreciate that.
So I have a, a comment on the drainage that goes-
Your name and name and address.
Karen Hillier, nine-twenty Valley Forge Road.
Where was, where was your street? I'm sorry.
Nine-twenty Valley Forge Road. So the drainage that you were referring to, like two different properties in the Dorchester Road property-
Correct, lot thirty-four.
So I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but when I came through, that, that wrap very backed up, and one of the homeowners, I'm not sure which lot, tried to clear some of the debris that was blocking it to help the water go through, so his own property wasn't flooding, and he nearly lost his life due to the force of the water pushing on him while he was trying to clear that, because he was trying to protect his property from the flooding. My concern being at nine-twenty Valley Forge Road, if that now gets connected through pipe, pipe-wise, so it won't block on his end, it's going to block on my end, and all that water, that, all the debris that runs through the wooded, where a bell on the terrace is, it all gets backed up because of just sticks and stuff that fall from trees, leaves, trash, gets pushed through the backyards of everyone's yard, and acid end up going through there. It's going to then, if it's not backing up there, it's going to back up onto my property, and just bring that to everyone's attention. It's, might be better for some lots, but it will not be better for everyone else. And then I just had a question on the plans. There was something about reconstructing existing driveways as required on, on Valley Forge Road for nine-twenty and nine-eighteen. There was like a little tiny comment. Can you just clarify some information about that? So it's the two driveways, like you were to turn out of Segley on, to the right, it's the first two driveways, they're very close to that Segley entrance. Would they need to be, the driveways need to be relocated?
Thanks, good question. PennDOT, when they issued the permit last time, they asked us to provide a access to, if they wanted to use our new road to go, to go back and forth.
So it's optional?
It was optional.
It's not required?
Not required. We, we, we gave notice to those that-
At the time.
At the time, yep. So I assume that may come out again with another permit, maybe the same thing.
Okay, so, but it was not required-
Not required, it was, we needed to offer to allow them to come onto the new road.
Okay. Okay.
My name is Dan Ikemel, I live at one-oh-five Burn Drive, that's the intersection of Burn and West Philip. So my daughter goes to the, to Scoobal Elementary. Just wanted to let everybody know that she would actually be, we're a block away from the same bus stop that, that Mike spoke about. So we're half a mile from Scoobal, but kids are not allowed to get off at that bus stop and cross White Horse Road. The school has acknowledged, because we questioned them, because instead, my daughter has to, she's on the bus for about forty-five minutes, she is not allowed to get off at that stop and cross White Horse Road and walk four or five houses to our house. So just wanted to make it publicly known that the school has acknowledged that that intersection is unsafe. I don't know if that factors in, but everyone should be aware that that is the school's position, public position. In addition, I come out of that intersection every single day at about eight o'clock. That's a suicide lane.
It's like a parking lot.
It's a blind hill coming from the Scoobal Elementary in both directions, you have traffic coming very fast, and additional traffic on that road is very dangerous.
And I want to clarify, it's not a parking lot, it's a freeway.
Yeah, it's exactly the opposite.
Forty-five fifty-five with concrete trucks, tractor-trailers, Wawa trunks, school buses stopping, like I said, pulled up cameras, saying, you know, my daughter has to get on at forty-five minutes earlier than the school starts, because she, she's not allowed to get on his side of the street, not allowed to cross the street. To leave East Philip to go to West Philip, which is the community, my wife and I, my daughter, we have to check, triple-check before we cross the road on a bike, on a scooter, or walking, and people walk across the street all the time to leave our subdivision, their sick cul-de-sac, to, to the other neighborhoods. You've got to look at that traffic stop, it's very, very dangerous, not be just a intersection. That's speaking from residents that live there. One other thing, too, from, from the one person that makes the decision about the cul-de-sac, the select site, who doesn't live in a neighborhood. Think about that as well, so if they're making the decision, yes, they own the property, I get it, but they don't live in a neighborhood either, you can't pass that to a person, a resident that lives there.
Ten Zek House, one-sixty-nine East Pothouse Road. I attended the meeting that they, we had a few years back, and they were proposing the ninety-plus houses. This one is a lot less, but I'm still opposed to this. There's too much traffic in this particular area. There's too much traffic on White Horse, I live on Pothouse, the traffic goes all hours of the night, it's loud, there's buses, there's big rigs towing buses, this is just going to add more traffic to this particular part of the township, not just the amount of cars that are going to be in the development, development itself, but the amount of cars that will support it, the trash trucks, the FedEx trucks, the Amazon vans, it's too much traffic, and I just, and vehement, vehemently, I am just opposed to this development. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rich McDuck, I live at thirteen-fifty-one Patrick Henry Drive. I just have a few questions, and honestly, I don't live near the development that's being developed. I don't live near Phillips, and I feel a pain from what's going on there, it's a pretty sad situation that's going to occur. I've been at these meetings for many years. I was here when this thing was originally looked at as a home development site, and when it was going to be sold, it was only going to be six houses, and I don't think Mr. Polwood was involved at that point in time, but that's what you thought was there. As prices going up, values going up, the properties around this area, it was determined then to go intensify to this, this site location that it has now, fifty, fifty-plus houses. That was shut down by this committee before, and asked to go and do the, the PUD, which helped there, and the reason for that direction was, because this particular development had a lot of kids, and at the time, the school district couldn't handle all the additional kids that was coming into it. Hence, we went through this massive building boom, where we renovated our, our high school and our, all the under schools, to increase capacity, but we're, we're over capacity again. I come from the perspective that when I first moved here, my taxes were thirty-two-hundred dollars, and now they're over ten thousand dollars, and they're going to go up even more in things like this that happen. You know, quite frankly, I mean, just my personal opinion, when you were looking at the PUD, where you basically consolidated the housing into certain areas, it seemed to be a better plan, just gave more open space. You mentioned about Eagle. Eagles have revisited this area, they used to be here flourishing before. Due to DDT and some other issues, they left, they're coming back. This particular situation, I don't know how well that's going to bear with Eagles in the community, but I'm sure it's going to have some kind of impact. The whole issue with regards to going into Phillips was, because of the concern of other neighbors, they basically said, "Hey, here's a compromise. We'll put in a, a medium-capacity road that only the neighbors in that particular new development, whether it be the PUD or the fifty-plus houses, had access to, one way." And what they're trying to do is minimize the issues with traffic, issues with having people driving through that neighborhood. The bigger concern is you're adding fifty-plus houses, how, my question is, how large should these houses, how many bedrooms do these houses have, how many bathrooms, what's the impact on our sewer? Do you have EFUs for that with respect to the number of people, drivers, how many cars are going to add to it? You're talking about probably at least another hundred cars, assuming everyone has two cars nowadays, so it's a huge impact from a road infrastructure standpoint. If you remember, the Delaware Valley Christian School had a property on twenty-three, which they tried to convert into a senior community. Everybody got together, basically said, "Hey, look, it's a phenomenal property, we want to keep it as it is. Yes, you can add houses." Now, in that particular case, they weren't able to put the sewer in, so the houses had to be on a minimum of two and a half, or, or something like two acres or three acres because they had septic, right? In this particular case, they had terrific access to the sewer, so hence we had fifty-some plus properties. I'd love to see you go back there and try to cut that back to two or three-acre minimums. It would keep the, the number of people down, you'd still be able to maximize the value of the property. Won't have that issue. I mean, I just had a lot of specific questions here, I don't want to take the next two minutes for that, but I just ask you guys to think about it, this is like fifty, fifty First Dates, we've been through this already before, we went down the path, we kind of went through this battle, and it was determined that if it were to be developed, there was, if there was a gentleman here that was going to buy that property at one point in time, so that none of this would be developed, and I don't know what happened to that, that guy, I need to get back in touch with him. I need to get back in touch with him to find out if that's still the case. But that's assuming that Mr. Pollard is willing to release it. But you know, that's one of the last few open spaces we have. And by the way, it's next to our drinking water that we all drink out of. So I know there's talk about reducing fertilizer, but you know, there's trash and there's runoff. There's a whole bunch of things that occur that would affect that water quality. And the whole idea of the recharge basin, I thought was what the direction we're going before. We have all that open space with the planned urban development. So therefore, it have the word, be able to pull, you won't have the runoff issues and be able to address all of that. So I think we need to dust off the 2008 notes and go back and look at it and say, why did we decide to go in that direction? Because that was the better direction if it had to be developed. It reduced the impact on the schools, reduced the impact on the environment. And at the end of the day, we still got Mr. Pollard the number of properties that he needed to, I guess, make this development work. The plus side was we had open trails, we had access to the property as a community. There was a wider bridge that was put in, so we didn't have to have to walk around or anything like that. And it kept the folks in the adjacent neighborhood happy because at least it minimized it. I don't know if no is the answer. I don't think you're going to get a no here. I'd like to give him a no. Absolutely like to give him a no. I'd rather have it open. But we need to really think about, how can we manage this thing that has the most minimal impact on everybody? Especially that neighborhood that's adjacent to it. I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm lucky and says. Hi, Sue Erchild, I live across the street at...
Across the street, where?
130 Valley Park, across the street with the white fence. So, and I'm already concerned about my neighbor and his three hundred acres and what's going to might happen there. And then we have this. But my question was, you mentioned that water was already running over fifty feet, fifty feet of land? Or something before it got to your, to the pipes or... When you were talking about the pipes between the two properties?
Oh, yes.
Door tester?
If I could, I'll speak up a little bit, hopefully it works without jumping, so I can point at the same time. There's a drainage area that comes probably from here. It kind of goes through, a lot of this drains and goes through, there's an existing, I think it's 2416 or something like that, pipe there right now. So the idea with this development is we'll be able to take some of the water that's going that direction. We're going to capture it on this and keep it on our site. The idea is to reduce the amount of water that was headed down there and have the post-development be a better condition than pre-development. Whether we connect the pipes in the end or leave them open, it's something we're happy to take a look at. But we won't increase the amount of water that's being delivered right there, right now.
Okay.
I can tell you, I kind of knew that unfortunate incident is what happened was a lot of the stuff blocked, the culvert that was there. I was able to help out a little bit and I got permission kind of to go in. Nobody really owns that fifty-foot strip or whatever that road is there. And we're able to clean up, cut some dead trees and some of those kind of things, try to help that in the future. One of the things that needs to happen is we need to make sure that those inlets are maintained and don't back up. And some of the other neighbors appreciate that.
And as far as the stormwater on the section closer to the reservoir, the larger section, what kind of flooding has that experienced in the past? Well, especially as he was saying with the climate change and the storms just getting more intense and what you know, it is basically just a flood plain.
Yeah, there are, obviously there's a hundred-foot flood level. You know, is that going to go up in the future? I believe it will, but it won't be in terms of feet at this location just because of the amount, just because of the width of the dam going up. All our, all our, all our, all our twenty-three homes, all our homes are way above the flood level here.
That's good to know.
If we could exit our stormwater management, even though we're going to be upco from it, if we could exit it down at the water level right now. What they want to do is make sure that there's no sedimentation that happens inside the...
Have you considered permeable asphalt, concrete?
I know about all that stuff.
I'm sure you do.
Well, I'm sort of in that. It's one of my passions. And I was just at the full notice, stormwater imposing. A lot of those perches, or the negativity about perches is that eventually it gets blocked up. There's a lot of other things that we can utilize to help that. One of the ways, if you can do the maintenance on the perches.
Yeah.
They have a lot of studies down there and a lot of things on the cases right now. They've had perches, Indian perches.
Favors and...
They have all kinds of, for years they've been, have cases.
And then the last question was, how do you plan on policing your homeowners on these products that they use on their property that won't go into our drinking water?
Yeah, so with the PRD plans, we had a good idea how we could do that because we had homeowner association property that wasn't doing the homes. And it's going to be a little bit more difficult here, but we'll try to figure out. I don't know, I don't know how we're going to do it.
I don't either. And again, that's drinking water. Our wild lakes, water.
The project was formed and so it's just a runoff in the form.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just want to say too, that you know, tonight, there are a lot of people that are going to show up. Unfortunately didn't because of Philly's game. So there is going to be another meeting of the minds here over the summer, given these changes that were discussed. So hopefully it'll be adequate notice, so that more people can basically discuss the bids. Because I can tell there's a lot of people that are interested in this.
Okay. Anyone on the planning commission have anything else?
As you stated earlier, you really weren't looking for us to do a recommendation this evening. And you're going to meet with township staff and work through a lot of the comments and stuff and make revisions to the plans and get those in so we can get a review. Hopefully addressing the majority of the comments and the letters and so on.
Yeah, I mean, we'll treat this like we would have if we were back in 2008. We have a review letter. We need, we respond to it. We give revisions if we think they're the appropriate things to do from those comments. That comes back in, gets reviewed, and eventually you get to a point where you either recommend approval or disapprove. Excuse me, a lot of times it's an approval recommending approval with compliance with conditions that are in the letter that are easier to just resolve at the final, go on the final plan. But the requirement that you do it is in the engineer's letter and so forth. So I mean, from our standpoint, this is, even though it's been in a balance for as long as it is, we're just back doing the normal process.
Right.
I'd just say one thing, it would be helpful if you take a look at the alternate plan because a lot of things that we're going to do here would make sense on one plan and not another. So if we can get a sense from the township on a direction on the alternatives, we could filter that into a lot of reservations.
That would be a good idea.
Except, except that we, until we get that alternate plan approved by supervisors, we still have to have the basic plan that's compliant in all respects.
Sorry, one more question. I don't think you addressed what size the houses are going to be.
That is undetermined at this time. My guess is we're well over a million-dollar hobby houses. We're not going to do the product again. We did that back in 2008. We're going to wait till we know what we're doing here and at that point we'll...
What size of the lots?
Their minimum size, thirty-five thousand square foot. The R1 zoning, just like their door tester.
So what is your unit per acre acreage count on this? Is it six, two units per acre, one unit per acre for the overall site?
I missed one, I'm sorry.
Fifty-one lot, sixty-six acre. So sixteen and fifty-one is basically three, something so, about seven tenths of a unit an acre.
Okay.
But you don't know.
You're not trying to crowd a lot of things into a space.
What?
You're not crowding a lot of units into a space.
No.
Very dense. Very dense. That's dense.
I'm not quite an expert.
It's not twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand.
So the density is something a little less than a unit per acre? Is what we're coming up with here. So when you look at, look at the way, you know, with the land that's involved, the open space and so on, that you are getting basically, we'll call it one acre zoning.
Yes, but if you took the, I guess I need that for a second. If you take, took the basic rule of thumb of the number of units, you know, if you took the minimum lot size and divided that into the acreage, you would get a potential yield. And then if you take like eighty percent of that number, that would be your rule of thumb anticipated yield because of roads and so forth. We're not there.
Yeah.
I guess, the only comment that I could make to this whole entire presentation is, I haven't heard one comment out of this presentation of this project of what it's doing to benefit the community. And you have a very controversial project in front of you because you're moving in through a neighborhood that's been kind of like one of those quiet little streets in the suburbs that people have, you know, known to love and enjoy, whether you live on the street or not. And, you know, you're putting in a fair amount of traffic coming in through the side street. And it drives me crazy that your drawing, by the way, is not north up, but on the north side of the site. Yeah, I've been trying to do that all night. Maybe it's just my profession, I don't know, but I'm just reading it that way. But I think part of what you have to come back to us with is what's the value to the community of doing this project?
Well, let me answer that for you, let me answer that for you real quickly. The municipality decided what was the by-rig development potential and proper uses of this zone. They've determined legislatively that whatever the impacts of that use are, they're acceptable. They're what the township anticipates by zoning it that way. This is not the type of use where you have to provide why you're different or why you're providing something. You're just doing what the municipality has said. This is what we see being done here. This is what we want by creating this zone. That's why you have...
I understand, I understand the legal ease of it all. All I'm doing from a recommendation standpoint...
Every year.
There isn't any, there's got to be a value proposition to the community and it would be nice to hear what that value proposition is in you trying to sell it. Just a suggestion, you don't have to do it. You're right, it's zone residential. You can put whatever you want in from a residential perspective. And our job is to evaluate whether or not it's meeting with the water concerning standpoint, the life safety of our people, and environmental. So we will judge it from that perspective, I am sure. But I just feel that it would help your case.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm trying to say to you is the benefit to the community is we're doing what the community has asked us to do.
The community did not ask you for a fifty-ounce development, fifty-plus ounce development. Who asked you that?
You're telling what the community...
You're doing what your partner made you do. Who asked you that?
Let's, confine the shout-outs, come up and say something to the microphone.
Not appropriate.
So what would the next steps be here, Kurt?
Do, we have, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Kurt. What would the next steps be? I mean, just so we're all clear on...
They're going to work with the township engineer and the township staff and township sister Bill Brennan and work on addressing the comments in the review letters and working out the disagreements on how things are applied and so on. They're going to submit a plan with a letter. We'll get another review and we'll have another meeting in November.
If it all gets done by November, it'll be November. If it all gets done by December, it'll be December. If an extension is needed for the township's time to act, I've already indicated to Mr. Brennan that that's not a problem.
Right.
Right. I would like to add a postscript. Having lived here for forty-nine years, we wanted to have PennDOT widen Route 23 in the 1990s. We had a regional group when I was leading the Phoenixville Area Chamber of Commerce. The only thing that we could get from PennDOT was a two-million-dollar grant that I wrote for them, to them. And the lights on Route 23 are timed. So the, having had to get out from Davis Road onto Route 23 for all these years, getting worse. So my feeling is positive aspect would be to get PennDOT to actually treat the state road in a better way by putting traffic lights in as a planning mechanism. So that would be safer for the inhabitants, whatever street they live on. We all use Route 23 one time of day or not. So they're realistic things that we can petition PennDOT to do, having worked with them for many, many years, that would be beneficial to the community, getting them to do the right thing.
Right. What does it have to do with this development?
It has, because it's a new development, it gives strength to the township and working in a regional way. I worked a long time in, it's not just my backyard. It's the backyards and front yards of neighboring communities. As we work together as a region, we can petition PennDOT to do better traffic planning than has been conducted. The timed lights on Route 23 were put in 1996 when I got that grid. That's a long time ago.
I'm sorry, respectfully though, on that comment, isn't the point of the planning committee to also plan in accordance with PennDOT?
No, definitely.
Your request, there would be PennDOT, a future ask of PennDOT to provide to the township, which isn't granted. As a commission, as a planning commission, your job is to plan in accordance with what we have today. So I just want to rebut kind of that argument a little bit and make that clear.
Steve Kuntz from the Environmental Advisory Council. Someone was saying, well, where does this go next from here? Well, the very next thing, maybe not for you, the planning commission is, but next week on Tuesday... week on Tuesday, Todd Pollak and his crew will be presenting to the Environmental Advisory Council. And we are preparing a comment letter that'll have to be in draft form for that meeting, but we have a lot of comments and concerns to discuss next Tuesday with, with the applicant. I was glad to hear some of the, studies are being updated, the wetland study, the PND study. I guess I have a question about, one of the concerns that the EAC had originally about the wetland study, and we still have about the wetland studies, is that it was mostly focused on the Reeves property. And of course, if you go just off the Reeves property here, you're onto Aqua Land, which is reservoir and additional wetlands. So originally they said, you know, there are no wetlands on the property, which was correct, but it wasn't correct to say there were no weapons involved with the project because, you know, the Eagle's Point Boulevard crosses an easement across Aqua's land. I never wet one there. So I'm hoping that the updated wetland study will look not only at the Reeves property, but the Aqua Land as well.
And we did that, the wetland study was over on to Aqua's property.
All right, we haven't seen that. We saw something for select sites. Is that what you're talking about?
No.
For the, that little seven flags?
No. Well, I'm sure to include, we agree with that.
All right, you know, and, and we look forward to, to discussing things with you next week.
Thank you, Steve.
I wanted to add one more thing, sorry. I didn't think your memo was the least of the day.
Okay. I guess procedurally, do we need to officially table this or, or we just, we just...
You've had a discussion.
You're right.
You would just move on to your next item on your agenda if there is one, if not, you can drop.
Can I just ask one last question real quick? Why is there not, or can, can there not be a homeowners association for this project?
I didn't say there would be.
Oh, okay. All right, because you were saying that the PRD had a homeowners association and that, you know, was good because you could, you know, require...
The homeowners association owned a large chunk of land which acted as a buffer from the residential properties to the reservoir. In this case, the residential lands go to the edge of the property.
Right.
That's what Todd was talking about as being beneficial on the PRD for quality stormwater management.
But there could be a homeowners association here?
Likely will be, like there will be.
Okay, good, thanks.
That would be very helpful.
Sure, that'll tell us when to take the crystal pipe down, when the trash cans away, all that stuff, all the good stuff.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you to the public for all your, your input.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? No, I want to stay.